I'm studying my artwork and my paintings that I do. My favorite isn't here anymore. They already bought it. It actually makes me feel good because, I mean, I accomplished something.
I'm producing what is my talent. Right here, I have some canvases that I did with passion. I love to do art.
What the council member wants to do with this event is to encourage the kids to pursue entrepreneurship opportunities, encourage them to become entrepreneurs.
Today, we were here just kind of as a moral support for the young entrepreneurs. They're very talented and there's people out there, myself included, that admire the arts.
I just supported my daughter when I see that it's gonna be an amazing event where kids can be entrepreneurs. I was like, "I wanna be there. I wanna support her."
A lot of times, people make money and the first thing they do is pay all the bills, and then start spending money, so they're paying other people's bills and they forget, "Did I put any money away for me?" And I want these young kids at an early age, as earliest as possible, to know how important it is to pay yourself first when you make money.
I give it its prize by its value of time, effort, and also the material that I use.
We get to learn like, oh, this is how we have to do it if we wanna have a business.
This week, Councilmember Boos Guyano partnered up with the Aquarium of the Pacific for his annual free night at the museum and toy drive. Families join the council member for some amphibious fun for a good cause.
This is Council District 15's annual toy drive in partnership with the Aquarium of the Pacific. The aquarium gives us one day out of the year for a free community event here, and we've partnered with the aquarium to make this our annual toy drive. We are so blessed to have people from this entire region, actually. Not only my district, but this entire region to come and give a toy for those who need it the most. The toys tonight will be distributed to a number of nonprofits throughout Council District 15, from Watts to San Pedro, Wilmington, Harbor City, Harbor Gateway.
Well, here at the Aquarium of the Pacific, we're celebrating one of our district nights for District 15 over in San Pedro. Constituents of that district are able to come to the aquarium, and we'd love to be this community resource. Our mission is really important to connect with our local communities, our local district offices, and we're happy to do that tonight.
So we're here with Johnny. Johnny, why are we here at the Aquarium of the Pacific?
To give toys, to give toys to people that need it.
So on behalf of my team at Council District 15, wishing the city of Los Angeles a blessed and safe holiday season.
Did you catch Councilmember Boos Guyano joining in as our latest LA This Week reporter? A tip of the hat to you, sir. Councilmember Paul Krikorian also joined in the spirit of the season with his 10th annual holiday food and toy drive. Rochelle Goyle takes us to the kickoff event, where even Danger Man dropped in.
I think teddy bears, it's a symbol of love. If you give somebody a teddy bear, like, you wanna give lots of love. And when you have love, I think you have everything.
Well, definitely a lot of love here. Lucie Géron, a local restaurant owner, is among the many donating to support Councilmember Paul Krikorian's annual holiday food and toy drive. It's her second year contributing, and she says it brings her so much joy.
It's about holidays, about love, about giving, and it's festive. I love it. A gift to receive.
Councilmember Krikorian started the drive 10 years ago. For the past five years, it's been held at the First Christian Church in North Hollywood.
We're privileged to work with them and very grateful to them for giving us this space. And sometimes, we need this much space because truckloads keep coming in and carloads, and people open their trunks and bring in the food and bring in the toys, and it begins to become kind of emotionally overwhelming, if not overwhelming in space.
It's always important, whether it's this time or anytime, to be able to support and to care for members of our community that have less than those of us who are fortunate enough to have more than enough.
It's an opportunity to bring people together from the community to help those in need.
I think it is important so everyone or anyone doesn't feel left out. The ones that can afford to buy presents for their loved ones know that they're not left out, that there is support.
This event truly brings people together. Now, once the food and toys are collected, then they are further distributed. The food goes through the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry, which then distributes to several other congregations. And the toys are sent to organizations who then distribute to families and people in need.
Danger Man, the real-life urban superhero who promotes literacy, good health, and safety to children in urban communities, has been an avid supporter of the councilman.
Community is important, okay? And being how he's really for people and helping the homeless and trying to make sure our communities are safe, you know, it's very important.
And whether it's one item or many, every little bit helps. And it doesn't just stop at the holidays.
There are people who are going to be in need after the holiday season ends. So anybody who ever wants to help homeless families or people who are getting close to homelessness or people who are victims of domestic violence or kids who are struggling with illnesses, we always have ways to support those sorts of causes. And so anybody can call anytime and we'll find a way to help.
And it's not too late to donate. If you are interested in supporting the drive, you can contact the councilman's office at 818-755-7676.
Bad weather didn't stop the giving. Who says Angelinos won't go out when it rains? Councilmember Bloomingfield celebrates the holidays in Reseda. Glassell Park gets an eco-friendly soccer field. And check out the sights and sounds at the El Pueblo tree lighting ceremony. It's time for a city beat.
Councilmember Bob Bloomingfield recently hosted his annual open house and toy drive at the CD3 offices in Reseda. Local residents turned out en masse with holiday gifts for the needy, children's toys, and practical supplies for the homeless. In addition to sharing some neighborly cheer, guests were treated to a new art exhibition from some of the area's finest.
And then after this is over, we've collected all supplies, we'll go and we'll distribute those supplies to folks who need them.
Glassell Park resident and city councilmember Mitch O'Farrell dedicated the opening of a new eco-friendly soccer field at Irving Middle School. The field had been unused since 2014, when the city red-tagged it due to extreme wear and tear. The new community field, completed for about half of the original budget estimate, features state-of-the-art synthetic turf and other green, eco-friendly amenities.
I hope that the mamas, the parents, the students can really enjoy this with their families.
And it was a countdown to happiness as the El Pueblo Historical Monument held their annual tree lighting ceremony in downtown Los Angeles. A longstanding community event for Angelinos of all types, the ceremony featured live entertainment, refreshments, face painting, children's activities, and a fun visit with you-know-who. Happy holidays.
Okay, I'm really excited to share this one with you. Who doesn't wanna selfie with Santa? Gil Reyes takes us to the latest Instagrammable pop-up, Falla Land.
Are you ready? Are you ready? All right. Welcome to Falla Land.
Get your smartphones out. Downtown LA's newest pop-up gallery, Falla Land, is selfie central for holiday photos, inspiring the likelihood of likes from even the grinchiest of Instagram friends, says co-founder Chloe Summer.
Creating spaces where, when we enter them, we feel a bit lighter, we feel a bit happier.
So where are we, Chloe? What is this?
So we are entering the North Pole. And the North Pole is meant to transport you really to another realm.
Inside this Christmas village, everything in town is about the size of a child's playhouse, including the movie theater. Now playing, Miracle on Alameda Street. That's where Falla Land is located.
Mrs. Claus greets our guests in this room, and she often jokes she had a little... Hello, we were just talking about you.
Hey, it's Mrs. Claus.
Mrs. Claus, what happened here? What happened?
Oh, I left the popcorn machine out overnight, on overnight, and...
It looks great.
I made a lot of popcorn. Do you like popcorn?
I love popcorn.
Well, you could take some on your way home when you leave.
As you journey through here, if you're a child, you'll delight in the colors and the sounds and the sense. But as adults, sort of the humor throughout it all. Have you been naughty or have you been nice?
A little bit of both.
So, well, you can't walk through the middle, so take your pick. Take your pick.
I'll go through the nice. I'll go through the nice.
Okay, I'll follow you.
All right, let's see. Let's see what we got here. Walking through the nice here. And, oh, look at this.
This is the room where big-money dreams come true. Naughty or nice, everyone wins at Falla Land. But rather than Lotto balls picking today's winning numbers, those are Christmas balls you might hang on a tree. And speaking of trees, check out the brightly colored tannenbombs in the Falla Land forest. Deep in the woods, we search for an elusive Christmas creature.
And that's the elf right there.
Well, that's not... Where is our hidden elf? All right, we have a hidden elf, hidden in the trees.
Okay.
So he sort of gets out every night and hides in a different spot.
He's not a scary elf.
No. We don't have scary elves at Falla Land. Come on.
On dasher, on dancer, onto our final room, where we meet Santa and hop aboard his sleigh.
When you're recording on your cellphone, it looks like you're flying over the world on Christmas Eve.
Exactly.
Yeah, that whole...
Exactly.
And this background here, is this Los Angeles?
This is Los Angeles.
Wow.
It's our beautiful city at night.
There's downtown. I recognize that. It's a good little escape, escapism from reality.
And it's really important. It's important for everybody to have that moment of forgetting about whatever may be going on in the world or their own personal life and just having a few moments to smile, whether it be with friends or their families or, you know, even strangers, you know, the feeling in here is, there's a feeling, I'm sure you felt it, of camaraderie because everybody feels good.
The adults have just as much fun, and it's just, you know, a great time of year. Everybody's nice to each other, and we should all learn from that. And why not live like that all year long?
Take plenty of photos and let your heart be light at Falla Land. Open every day except Mondays throughout the holiday season at 787 South Alameda Street in downtown Los Angeles.
It's time to break out those ugly sweaters for a good cause. Get your pencils ready for some extreme character drawing and visit a fashionable selfie wonderland. Here's some things to do.
December 19th is National Ugly Sweater Day, and we are celebrating with the Fourth Annual Ugly Sweater 5K and 10K. Now, this event is a virtual run, which means you can run for charity anytime during the month of December. This year's charity will be Feed My Starving Children. Get decked out and run the distance for a great cause. For more information on the Ugly Sweater 5K and 10K, visit virtualrunevents.com. Get your pens and styluses ready. It's an evening of extreme character drawing at the Nohman School of Visual Effects. Enjoy an evening of live models, fun music, free drinks, and drawing. The guest speakers for the event include famed reference model Rick Gallagher. Extreme Character Drawing is happening Friday, December 14th, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at Nohman School of Visual Effects, 1015 North Cowenga Boulevard. For more information, visit gallerygirls.com. Strike a pose. The fashion team that brought you BeautyCon L.A. proudly presents BeautyCon Pop, the ultimate destination for self-and-selfie expression. Eight carefully curated galleries will take you on a fully immersive and super-shareable journey. Check out BeautyCon Pop, December 14th through the 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. 333 South La Cienega Boulevard. For more information, visit beautyconpop.com. And those are some things to do.
Our final story looks at a partnership between LAUSD and the Special Olympics that's breaking down barriers for these local kids. Edel Marcos takes us to school games.
All this excitement is the culmination of six weeks of hard work and fun of an adaptive P program at LA schools for these kids with special needs. And these games are their time to shine in front of their parents and the world.
Let's go, kids! And let's go!
It's a proud moment for both the parents and the children as these special-needs kids take to the field to play soccer, many for the first time in their lives.
You know, I'm such a crier, but for me to see my son, you know, participate in something like this is very emotional for me. Because, you know, he doesn't have the ability to walk.
For me to see him do, you know, one or two things, for me, it's a big achievement.
The so-called school games are in their 12th year, a joint effort by the Special Olympics of Southern California and the LA Unified School District. This fall clinic is teaching soccer skills, while a spring clinic teaches track and field. A big part of getting the kids ready, the teachers.
We play ball in our classroom too, because Carol has upper body strength, so we try and work on that and we build on that.
This is important for our kids. They get out and play sports, and they're active and healthy. And we want them to be active just like the rest of the kids in the population and have the same opportunities as them.
But what if you're in a wheelchair? Well, that's no excuse to sit out. You can always play hawker, a combination of soccer and hockey, adapted specially for the needs of kids in wheelchairs. The ball is super-big and super-soft.
I pushed it too hard.
Too hard? There's no such thing as too hard. What do you mean? It went out of bounds?
Yeah, it bounced.
The ball is larger, and so they could hit it, they could kick it, they could throw it. We also have adults on the fields where kids who need a little bit more hand-over-hand assistance. So it's really an interesting game to really watch and see. It's really fun.
Here we go. Here we go.
Even you-know-who takes a turn with the giant ball.
They were playing together, everybody together, that everybody was a team. And all the kids were enjoying having a smile on their faces. That was the most...
What did that do for you?
Oh, it feels so good.
Nice.
And when it's all over, prize ribbons for all, because everyone here is a winner.
This is a starting point to introduce Special Olympics to students and athletes.
What are your emotions right now?
Tired.
Just tired?
Yeah, just tired.
Well, after all that running around, you're allowed. Who knows, there just might be a future Special Olympics athlete or two in the bunch.
That's gonna do it for this edition. I'm Umeama Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. And check out our newest social media videos, LA This Minute.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Those of you that have a seat, please take your seat. I want to welcome you to City Hall and to your Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomfield Bonin, Buscayino Sadio, Englander Harris Dawson, Weezer Coretts, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez Riewesson, fourteen members and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves, Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves and Bloomfield seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, could all rise? Could Mr. Coretts, would you lead us in our flag salute today, please?
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue items sixteen to tomorrow, December 12th, inasmuch as the ITGS committee is considering that matter later today.
Okay, so order.
Items one through ten are items noted for public hearing. There are cards on all ten items.
Okay, continue.
Items eleven through thirty-two are items for which public hearings have been held. Item thirty-two requires a motion. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold thirty-two and prepare to vote on the remaining items.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there is a request to hold item twenty-seven.
We can do that as well. Okay, so let's prepare to vote on the other items. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
Items thirty-three through sixty-two are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body. You have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, then please continue.
Items sixty-three through sixty-six are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
One second, Ms. Rodriguez?
You took care of it.
We're good?
Got it.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Items sixty-three through sixty-six are items scheduled for closed session.
Okay, why don't we just at this point hold them for... Or, Mr. City Attorney, can you respond?
Yes, so items sixty-four, sixty-five, and sixty-six, we have to take public comment on. But item sixty-three, I believe, can be voted on unless a member wants to go into close.
Okay, why don't you read that item? Madam Clerk, and then we'll move on. Or, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item sixty-three, which is Shirley Suzano versus City, the motion is that City Council authorize... authorizes payment of $125,000 if the case is dismissed at the summary judgment stage, or $500,000 if the claims are not entirely dismissed at the summary judgment stage.
Okay, thank you. So let's prepare to vote on that item. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
On the supplemental agenda, item sixty-seven is an item for which a public hearing has been held. However, there is a request to hold it on the desk for an amending motion.
Then let's do that. Continue.
Items sixty-eight through seventy-six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body as well. Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Then we will hold them. Continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
Do we know where he's... I don't know.
Yes?
Good morning, colleagues. I think we're just waiting for our guest of honor.
That helps.
Is it fashion that we can just make sure my hair is not all messed up? Okay. Is he here yet? Is he putting on that tie in the elevator, or...
Why don't you just honor Mr. Coretts? Paul, congratulations.
Mr. Coretts, are you moving? Folks, any day now.
Drum roll, please.
Jimmy D., surprise! I got you, I got you good! That's right. Thank you very much, colleagues. Surprise, Jim. Colleagues, after many years of service, I have to say farewell to my friend, my best friend, my brother, my chief of staff, Jim Dantona. Jim will be leaving us to become the San Luis Obispo's Chamber of Commerce President and CEO. You know, I never thought Jim would leave because, you know, I know Jim loves his job. He loves coming in every day. And he looks forward to all the great times that we have, especially the beatings. But nevertheless, we talked about it over the summer, and we talked about what we wanted to do in the future, where we see ourselves in the next fifteen, twenty years. And he said, you know, "I found the place that I would love to retire." "I found the ideal place where me and Jen can be close to family, and I found the ideal place that I would consider, you know, a little special place in California." And he said, "San Luis Obispo." And, you know, honestly, colleagues, I've never really been there. I think I've driven through San Luis Obispo on my way to San Francisco. But when he talked about this unique, little charming little town, I said, "Wow, that sounds like the perfect place for you and Jen to retire." I never, in my wildest dreams, would have thought that the day would come, six months later. But it did. And I want to say that it took me a little bit by surprise only because it was so fast. But Jim has dedicated more than fifteen years of his life to this city. He began his career in the city of Los Angeles in 2003, working for then-Councilmember Tony Cardenas, and served as his field deputy and his planning deputy. He then went to become the planner for Councilwoman Wendy Grue, where he led a lot of different projects in the San Fernando Valley, primarily in Mr. Krikorian's district, Council District Two. At the same time, he was also serving as a planning commissioner for the city of Simi Valley. And we all know where the real valley is, the San Fernando Valley. But that's where Jim lives. He then took a break from the city of Los Angeles and went to go work for the auto parket, Dashalolles Company, and then he went to go work for the CRA LA. But his passion has always been working for the city of Los Angeles, and he wanted to return back to the city council. And in 2011, he served as the chief of staff for Councilmember Tony Cardenas. He just couldn't get enough of Tony that he needed to come back for a second round. Then I finally met Jim. I knew who he was. I always thought he was a little strange. But I said, "You know, who is this guy that keeps hanging out with all these Mexicans from the northeast San Fernando Valley? Does he want to be us?" Like, I just didn't understand why this guy would constantly be around Tony and Alex and so on. And in 2013, I decided to run for the LA City Council. And this guy shows up to my campaign offices, and he said... He volunteered, and he said, "I want to be dedicated to walking and calling Lake Baboa." And I said, "Great," because I don't know a lot of people in Lake Baboa. And so we became walking partners. And he would pick me up at home, and we would walk. And just yesterday, we were doing the groundbreaking of a forty-four-unit permanent supporting housing building in my district, in Sun Valley. It just so happens to be that that building where we're building, that new supportive housing, was my old campaign office, which is now being torn down to build supportive housing for our homeless community in Sun Valley. And we were laughing because Jim was there, and I said, "Wow, this location has seen a lot of tears." Because if you guys remember, in 2013, in May of 2013, May 20th, to be exact, I lost my primary election by twenty points. And Jim and I, after working so hard and walking the district, that day, I think I saw a different side of this man. I saw a compassionate, amazing individual who said to me, "You know what? You can figure this out. We can do this. We can do it if we continue to walk the district, because not everyone knows your story. And not everyone knows what you want to do for this district." And so the very next day, after I cried my eyes out that night, it took me about three days to recover. But Jim was at my house, three days later, knocking on my door and says, "We got to get up again. We got to make sure we go back to Lake Baboa, and we need to make sure we continue to walk." Well, Jim and I walked for two and a half months in a hundred and ten-degree weather in the San Fernando Valley. And in July 23rd of 2013, I won thy primary by ten points, thanks to this man. That's bigger on the front. You know, and ever since 2013, and he knows this, because we talk about this a lot. We talk about how scared I was to get here. He talked about what it would take for me every morning to muscle the courage to walk into these council chambers and do the job that I dreamed of. We talked about how scared I was to be in committee and not being prepared and not knowing exactly the consequences of my votes in committee. We talked about that. We would talk about what it was and how terrifying it was for me to walk into some of these huge settings where I had to give a speech about how it is it that I was able to pull off a thirty-point swing. You know, I remember the words of Jim. He would tell me on the way home, "You know what? You earned your keep on this council. You earned the right to be here. And we are going to do amazing things for this community, because I know how much you care for Council District Six." And ever since then, Jim has never left my sight. And Jim has always made sure that we put our best foot forward to representing this district, that we care about the kinds of services we deliver for our constituents, and that we made sure that projects like the Fire Station Thirty-Nine, which has cost us more gray hairs than I can count for the past four and a half years, we have done it together, and it's currently under construction. The expansion of the Van Nuys Airport, and what you have done, Jim, to ensure that the operators feel that they are respected by the Los Angeles Airport, is respected by the community, and that the community has a buy-in to what the airport does, is thanks to Jim. And your love for the Mid Valley YMCA, which we just celebrated this week, is all due to you and your efforts and everything you do for this district. You know, I never want to say bye. I find it really difficult to say goodbye to people, and sometimes I just shy away and just don't even want to deal with it, and I'm in complete denial. But over the last month, I have really tried my best to not only make sure that Jim understands that we're going to be okay, and that we have built an incredible team, thanks to your leadership, and that we have no reason to believe that we're not going to continue to do great work. But I wanted to make sure that Jim got recognized, not only for the fifteen years that he's committed to the city, but he also needs to know that all of us who are here to celebrate him understand that Council District Six would not be what it is today if it wasn't for your work and your effort and your guidance. So, Jim, thank you very much for being my friend. Thank you very much for putting up with me. Thank you very much for being part of my family. Jim is a brother that I never had. We fight like sister and brother, but we make up like sister and brother, and we go at it again the next day. Jim is just that guy. I want to make sure everybody knows I've left an ultimate breakfast sandwich for you from Jack in the Box, because this man lives on Diet Coke and Jack in the Box every single day. It drives me crazy, and it makes him so proud. So I wanted to make sure I shared in all of you what Jim has for breakfast every day. And I wanted to also acknowledge his beautiful wife, Jen. Jen Dantona, who's here. I often wonder how Jim scored such a beautiful woman, right?
He tricked her.
He tricked her. I also want to acknowledge his dad, who's here from Portland.
Welcome, sir.
Papa Jim Dantona.
Welcome.
Uncle Frank is also here. And Aunt Mary Lou, who's also here. And his cousin, Joe Dantona. And his sister Jenny. And Mazi, who's the latest addition to the Dantona family, who's a baby. The only addition to the Dantona family. And his cousin, Rocco. So thank you very much, guys, for being here. Members, I want to let Jim say a few words before we give him his big recognition. Thank you very much.
Okay, but before Jim starts, let me recognize Mr. Englander.
I don't know why anybody would want to leave this building.
No, the question is, why does anybody want to leave me?
That's even more so. And I have a feeling that every one of those fights, we can all guess who won. And I have a feeling that every one of those fights, we can all guess who won. You know, and Jim, we go way back. And you walked precincts and volunteered for so many of us. I know you were there on my very first campaign. By the way, Nury, we won that one in the primary, so I'm not sure what he did differently, but...
I messed up, so...
Yeah, it was all Jim. Just what a fun guy. You're good at everything you do, like everything you touch. Well, maybe with one exception. We went shotgun shooting recently and a rally. And I think you hit one or two targets out of 100, but yeah, maybe, maybe. You've been a dear friend. And I'm so happy for you and your family. You deserve the very best. I mean, everything you've done, you've done well. And I wish you the very best because you deserve it. So, God bless you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. President, Nury, yeah, I think we're all going to feel it. Jim, you are an extension of the family. And you have been an incredible part of the broader team to serve a population that desperately needed your expertise. And you have been an incredibly valuable part of how we lead in the northeast San Fernando Valley. I am incredibly grateful to you as well for your friendship. You know, he showed up and did door hangers and did all of that stuff to help so many of us around the horseshoe and in countless other campaigns and elections. And you are just an incredibly valuable and talented individual. And you will definitely be sorely missed here. I wish you're going to be in a beautiful part of the state. And we look forward to visiting you. But wish you the very best in this new endeavor. You know, this just sounds like the perfect opportunity for you. And congratulations, my friend. We're very proud of you.
Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you. I just want to rise and recognize my Italian brother from another mother. I'm going to miss the days that I would find you in the parking lot and we would sing Frank Sinatra tunes and "Cena Luna Menza Mare."
I didn't know this.
Yes. Next to Paul Carretts, Jim was my karaoke partner. But nonetheless, Jim, you are surrounded by, of course, Nury, who is going to suffer tremendous loss. Surrounded by so much love from your family. And if you look behind you, the entire staff that you led for many years here at City Hall. And it's a testament to your commitment and leadership. And I know they're sad to see you go. But you're going to spread your wings and fly up north and lead a Chamber of Commerce that, of course, that certain part of the state. It's an incredible place to live and visit. And I'm looking forward to having an excuse to visit you at San Luis Obispo. So my friend, God bless you. Good luck. You'll be truly missed. And thank you, Nury, for bringing Jim to the forefront today during our council presentation.
I'll be planning the road trips.
All right, let's do it.
I'll sign you up.
All right. And Jim, if I could just say this. Without a doubt, you will be missed. And like I told you when I first found out, you're just a good man, a good human being. It has been an honor just to know you, to hang out with you, and to call you my friend. So the entire council, the entire building wishes you and your family the best. Again, you will be missed. Good luck to you. The floor is yours, Big Jim.
Thank you so much. There aren't even the words for me to express my gratitude for this and for everything that's happened. Obviously, I need to thank my family. My wife Jennifer, who has been... Who knew what she was signing up for a little bit. She knew she had a guy that wanted to be part of public service, but I don't think she realized what it really meant for the last 15 years. And whether it was the late nights, or the weekends, or the campaigns, or everything like that, she stuck by me. And I couldn't have been more appreciative. And I'm so lucky to call her my wife. And thank you. Thank you so much. And I'm not sure if it's a thank you, but I have to, I guess, thank my father who got me into the love of public service. That and the Chicago Cubs. I gave up on the Chicago Cubs. And that was awful. But politics and public service has meant the world to me. You know, show me what the value of this is and what we do here every day. And so for 45 years of support and love that you've given me, I couldn't have been here without you. So thank you. I love you. To the rest of my family that's here, it's amazing. My...
My godfather.
Frank.
My godfather Frank.
And my Aunt Mary Lou have been rocks for me during my whole life. You know, it does take a village. And having a family like this around you really allows you to be successful. Again, wouldn't be anywhere near where I'm at if it hadn't been for these two. Their son who's here and my cousin, my primo, like a brother to me. My cousin Joe has been there, again. There as part of my family. All of the Dantona family has been great for me and so I'm so thankful for everything they did. I do want to thank, I want to thank the staff. The CLA's office, CAO's office, everybody, Planning Department, everybody who taught me how to do what we do here every day and the important stuff. And the other offices. You guys are amazing, except for Doug Tripp. I don't like that guy. He's my doppelganger. He tried to take head purse carrier away from me. Actually, he does it much better. But all the other staff in the other offices, the way we've been able to work together. Occasionally, we come head to head and fight it out, but there's always, we always are on the same side of making LA better. So thank you to everybody you did, all the things you did to help me. My staff, the Nury staff, sorry. There's a beating coming for that later. No, I'm just kidding. No, just kidding. The, this team, look, I've worked with a lot of staffs. I am, this is one of the best groups I have ever seen. They stick together, we fight hard, we play hard, we work hard. And I know what you said. You're going to be just fine without me. In fact, somebody's going to...
Why do you mean it like that?
No, you are. This team is so great. And eventually, I know in a couple of months, she's going to figure out, "What did that guy actually do?" I actually have the people who actually do it. You guys are amazing. Thank you for everything you do that made me look good because you guys did all the real work. So thank you so much to my staff. To the electeds. You guys do amazing work every day. I mean, the hardest work that anyone can do. And the good news is you get no thanks for it. You get beat, whether you do the right thing or the wrong thing. Just this morning, we were getting Facebook messages that we were trimming trees, but we were causing traffic.
And they were upset.
And they were upset that we were causing traffic, that we were trimming the trees. So there is no win. But yet, you guys do this every day. And to me, I want to thank you personally because the work you guys do, you get no thanks for it. You end up suffering for it, your family suffer for it. But in the end, your work is so important because it's the things that's going to keep this economy growing, keep these jobs going. So I want to say thank you to everything you do. Council President Wesson, it has been an absolute honor. When you came in, I was with Tony. And working with you, learning from you, the mastery of which that people want to criticize is not. It's getting things done. And sir, you've done it better than anyone I've seen, and I've seen them all and even seen your brother. You really do run a city that helps people. So thank you for your friendship. And I am honored to have worked with you. My sister from another mister, Nury Martinez. I love you with all my heart.
Let's not cry, let's not do this to you.
I'm not. You are. I'm not. I got dust in my eyes. I really, the 2013 was one of the most special times. It was one of the things I'm most proud of. That 30-point turnaround, no one believed in us. In fact, most of the people in this room didn't believe in us. And when we got here and we did it, we pulled it off, it was so exciting. And we came in the room and we were going to fix things. We weren't going to come in here with a chip on our shoulder. People didn't support us because we had important work to do for the people of the 6th District. You are amazing. I'm so proud of everything you've done. I know you've got more great things. And again, you've got two great people kind of backfilling me, Akli Padilla and Alexis Moran, who are coming to do more work than I probably ever did. So for all of you, thank you. But to you, thank you so much. Anything you ever need, you know I'll be there. Exactly. She has my cell, so unless I change that, I'm getting the call anyways. But thank you to all of you. I really appreciate it.
Jim, here's a little something so you don't forget us. Because you know how we do it in Council District 6. This is on behalf of our city family and our district and our staff. Thank you very much, my friend, for 15 years of an incredible, incredible leadership and for always, always believing in us. Thank you very much.
Give them one more round of applause. Mr. Bannon.
I'd like to ask that we reconsider item 9 from Friday's agenda for a technical amendment.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration.
And that would be for item 9 on Friday, and that council file number is 18-0651.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Mr. Bannon, I will actually...
Yes, Mr. Buscagno has an amendment that is circulating.
Sure. If we can, we have an amendment to this item that's been circulated for adoption.
It should be held on the desk as the motion has not yet been circulated.
Oh, it has not?
We'll do that as it's being circulated. Okay, so before we go to our next item, I'm going to call up a couple of our public comment card folk. So to kind of start this council off on a humorous note, I'd like to call up my party bros Chad and JT. Please come forward. Welcome, and it's good to see you guys again. We will kind of bring them up together and we'll do two minutes. Go ahead.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. A year ago, JT and I came here to stop you guys from ending parties in the Hollywood Hills. We love to rage and feel like it's a huge part of what makes America so freaking legit. To our chagrin, you guys decided to proceed with the ban and the decision hurt us deeply. We were so aggro, we even considered TP-ing your houses. Especially you, Herb. We wanted to hit you with 100 rolls of pure domination and then throw a party to celebrate it. And now, one year later, we have only one thing to say to you, Herb. Happy birthday, dude. Because of our different desires, we expected to have serious beef. But then you said "what up" after the meeting and it was dank. You have now become our mentor and your charisma has rubbed off on us big time. Plus, you and I are both Scorpios. I could tell because you're so brave and focused. Astronomy is legit. JT will not present our gift to you.
This is called a Hawaiian because it is from Hawaii. On this shirt is a bunch of pictures of your beautiful visage, Herb. You're a legend, dude. House party siempre. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Sergeant, why don't you bring them up so I can get my Hawaiian? Give them a round of applause. Madam Clerk, why don't we take up item 54 at this time? Okay, so we're going to start off with public comment on this item. So if I could ask Danny Garcia, John Pelzer, Sister Grace, Fiorella Isabel to come forward. Andrea Theodore. So if I've called you, please come in. Come down. Are they not inside or... Estrato Ronaldo.
Good morning, my name is John Pelzer. And I am here with She Does. I am also a 35-year homeowner in Sherman Oaks. And I urge you to approve the five new bridge housing facilities before you. And as a very proud Yimby, I not only approve a bridge housing in my neighborhood, I welcome it. I welcome the opportunity Bridge Housing gives us to do our part in addressing the needs of our unhoused neighbors. This is an opportunity to do the right thing. And it's an opportunity that only you can give the neighborhoods all across Los Angeles. And I plead with you to do so. Thank you very much.
Okay, again, this is item 54, the vehicle dwelling. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Fiorella Isabel and I am here with the She Does organization as well. We have in our hands a national crisis. We are the greatest country in the world. We have a homeless population that's growing at alarming rates. And thankfully, all of our hard work has paid off and we have some new funding. But that's not enough. After living in the streets under inhumane circumstances, it is essential to have the mental help and the help in our system for these people to get back into the workforce. Bridge housing is the key to help them transition back into being productive members of society, which is what we want. America has a huge opioid crisis as well, which is, let's be honest, a result of our broken system. Let's remember that the problem in this nation isn't lack of homes or funding, but the allocation of those funds. Let's also remember that we, the people, deserve basic needs like shelter and protection.
Hello, I'm Sister Grace. Mother Teresa said, "There is no greater poverty than being unloved, unwanted, or uncared for." And I'm here today with the She Does movement, asking you to open your hearts... asking you to open your hearts, your wallets, and your community to the homeless and to Bridge Housing and to realize she does or she dies. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Theodore. I'm here with She Does. Five years ago, I volunteered with C-3, uh, council member staff. Downtown LA representative told me, "If you wanna make changes, you have to go to Sacramento and change the laws. If you wanna help homeless women get off the street." We don't have enough beds. We don't have enough recovery beds for people seeking shelter and help. Now, I'm part of She Does, and we're here to make a difference. We're here to open up shelters for women in the city of LA, in the county. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Lorraine Lundquist, and I am also here with the She Does movement. I believe the "Beds Not Sidewalks" signs say it all. We need shelter for all residents of Los Angeles. We need beds, not sidewalks. And everyone deserves protection from the elements. Everyone deserves housing. Thank you.
Okay, now, you know what? The item 54 deals with the vehicle dwelling units. I think some of you are obviously here to support the Bridge Home units. So, the folk that just spoke, I'm gonna attribute that public comment to the Bridge Homes. So what I, I, I want the individuals that signed up, I mean, from this point on, the individuals that signed up where related to the vehicle dwelling item, which is item 54. So, there could be some confusion because some of you are new or I could just be confused. So I wanna try to get more folk up, but I'm trying to deal with the... In fact, can I, let me ask the city attorney something. City Attorney, since all of those speakers dealt with the Bridge Home, can we just change the item to what I believe is item 48?
Sure. Yes, yes, let's just do that. So, and then we'll go back to item, um, 54. 48, 49.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna call you and, uh, we're doing 48, so I want Mel, Claudia, Cory Mack. And guys, we, we have to hurry because I have to do the, uh, I have a time restriction, I'm told, on the, uh, the vehicle dwelling. So, Mel, good to see you. Go ahead.
Council President, all the respectful council members. I'm here to support not just the Bridge Housing project at 100 East Sunset Avenue, but all the other three on the, uh, agenda today in, on behalf of She Does, on behalf of everybody who's homeless in this city. So, uh, I kindly and highly urge you to make sure that you vote yes on all these four projects to get over 300 people off our streets. Thank you and she does.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Claudia Oliveira, Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, speaking in my private capacity. And today, I'm here in coalition with She Does. And I am here because I think, I think that there is a misconception of most people who oppose the Bridge. They don't understand that permanent supportive housing is, brings people in from all over the county. What Bridge does is that it takes people from the immediate area. So if you are within your area and you just happen to be so lucky to get one of the Bridge projects, trust me, this is going to take people from your area into shelter. It's going to better for everybody. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Cory Mack. I'm with She Does. I'm here to support all the Bridge Housing motions. One thing I'd like to say is, to me, a good neighborhood is when you kind of start to know your neighbors. You actually, like, you can recognize them on the street, et cetera. I've noticed that more and more, the people in my neighborhood I'm recognizing and interacting with and saying their names, greeting them, are actually homeless people. They need to have homes that aren't in tents on the sidewalk. They need to have some sort of roof over their heads until permanent housing is created. And that includes not only the women, the men, the children, and also their animal companions, who they view as family members. Some of them are on the street because shelters won't take those family members. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The Venice, the Venice community wants...
What is your name?
Tori Knight. I'm a Venice resident for 12 years. The Venice community wants to help the homeless and has voted for more resources. But the extremely, this extremely costly solution of building and then tearing down a temporary Bridge Home at the MTA lot is misguided and irresponsible, fiscally and socially. The MTA lot is undoubtedly not the right location for the following reasons. The MTA lot is surrounded by residential homes on all four sides, two sides less than 10 feet from the edge of the lot, and the noise from housing 154 people with outdoor dining, dog pens, staff, mouse amounts of vendors going through is too close to people's homes. The wet shelter has no drug requirements and it's within three blocks of, or two blocks from three schools, exposing a very vulnerable population of our youngest children to unstable and often volatile population.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Thank you.
I'm Michael Rapkin.
Okay, wait now. The way it, I call your name and then you come up. I hate to do this to you, but you just can't come up on your own. Please wait for me to call your name. I will, I will do that. All right, so because of the, the time limit, and we've gotta be able to agendize this, uh, dw, the, uh, the vehicle dwelling units, I'm gonna go back to 54. We have too many people here to deal with the Bridge Home, so just kinda sit tight. If you did not sign up or accidentally signed up to speak on 54 when you meant to speak on Bridge Housing, if I call you, don't come up. This is on the, uh, the ordinance that deals with the cars. So do we have Danny Garcia, Estrado, Rona Bortz, Chelsea Byers, Scarlett, Brian Ritzy, Heather Santora, Tara, Mike Dickerson, Patricia McAllister? Patricia, come up. Mike, is this on the cars? Good to see you. The floor is yours.
Hello, City Council. My name is Mike Dickerson from Koreatown for All. Um, I'm here to speak on 8502. Several members of this chamber, as well as the mayor of LA, have publicly committed themselves to ending the criminalization of homelessness. 8502 is part of a system that criminalizes homelessness in Los Angeles and makes it a crime to be poor. It essentially creates no-go zones where people cannot park in their cars. It treats car dwellers like they're sex offenders, that they need to be kept 500 feet away from schools and parks. This is adding to the perception that people who can't afford a place to live are inherently criminals. Uh, moreover, it recreates the original sin of homelessness in Los Angeles, the concentration of poverty and homelessness in places like Skid Row. The only places where people are allowed to park overnight are in a small section of Hollywood and a large section of downtown. Reauthorizing this law will simply recreate the concentration of poverty, and I encourage this entire committee to commit to reforming these rules so as not to create that concentration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. McAllister, we're gonna do it a little different today, so you get your, you get your one minute. This is on item 54.
Right, okay.
Okay, so go ahead. Good to see you.
Okay, thank you. Item 54, uh, you say you want to extend the, um, vehicle dwelling. That means people who live and sleep in their cars. I think that should be indefinite. We need to, you'd never count the people living in their cars because it's almost impossible to do that. So we have like 100,000 homeless on the street, probably about 25, 50,000 living in their cars and, uh, different kinds of vehicles. So this shouldn't be an extension. This should be normal business until you take that $1.5 billion that you got in HHH and start building housing. We don't need any shelters. Once they stay in their shelter for a while, they're thrown back on the street. So this, we need housing. So this, this, this car and these vehicles, those are housing units for people. So it's not like you have to extend something. This should be something that's permanent, not extension. Now, we wanna, uh, Ms. Martinez, we want you, I've been in your district and I didn't see you building. I went to that address. I want you to start building, all of you. I've only seen the President, President, uh, Herb Wesson building and, uh...
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Antonio Ramirez, Mr. Herman, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. This is just on the one item.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanna clarify that this is a, a form of criminalization of the homeless, which is totally insupportable because it's taken a long time to get the HHH and the H money out the door. The H money, they met last week at the county, and Renata Simerol from CD2, the one you're gonna represent, blew her stack because for the last five meetings, Phil Ansel of the CEO's office rolls out statistics that are impossible for the general public to understand and to know that we're making progress. And I think that the problem is possibly that we're not making progress. And we wanna make progress, which is why the Bridge Housing that these people are talking about is important. We have to do things that gets people into a decent place, including, and I've asked Councilmember Krikorian and David Rue to help with a mobile pit stop at the Universal Station on the Red Line. We're trying a lot of things, but we can't allow the money to get squandered and pushed out the door quickly without oversight. And that's what happened at Measure H. And they're gonna hear about it at the County Board of Supervisors because their big message was, "This is not working. We need to do something different."
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Herman, on item 54, vehicle dwelling ordinance.
So we criminalize people for sleeping in their cars. We criminalize people for living on a sidewalk. We criminalize people for not having affordable or rent-controlled housing. How in the hell do you expect us to get ahead of the game? We have an attorney up there, doesn't know how to read the rules because he's a circumcised Jew.
No, you gotta stay on the subject. I'm not gonna warn you again.
And because I know it for a fact, but I may be wrong, homeless people are not living on the street. Correct me, Mr. City Attorney. Homeless people living on the street? No, Mr. Herman, there's no homeless people. That's just the way people live because they're fucking stupid. No, we voted for Measure H. I know, but fuck the people, fuck the public. Let them keep paying more and more and more, and fuck the bitches in the back who keep complaining about HHH. And so the city attorney needs to confirm whether or not he's circumcised or not.
Your time's expired. Mr. Herman, please sit down and be quiet or I will remove you. Antonia Ramirez? Charlie Carnow? Charlie, are you here? Come on down. Is Antonia here?
Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, my name is Charlie Carnow. I'm here representing, unite here, the Hospitality Workers Union. On behalf of our over 30,000 members, many of whom, I, upon just looking at some of the addresses, are in homelessness, are in homelessness, particularly some of the food service workers. We oppose the criminalization of our, of our brothers and sisters. Um, folks don't live in their cars because they have another option. I hope, we hope that the council approves Bridge Housing today, but that's gonna take some time to come online.
Stay on the subject.
So, on, so we urge that, uh, that, that you not criminalize folks who are just doing what they need to do to survive. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the vehicle dwelling ordinance? Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. On, on 54, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send that item urgent forthwith.
Okay, let's take a vote on that. Let's open up the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, because of time, you're requesting we do what item is 40?
Ramirez here. I, I was, I was not allowed entrance when you called my name.
We already voted on the item. Do you wanna just take your general public comment?
I'd like to speak on this item. I was to help that.
It's already been voted on, Ms. Ramirez. It's already been voted on, and I called you several times. Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez, would you like to speak on your general public comment? I'm prepared to allow you to do that, and with your one minute, you can speak on just about anything.
Censorship. Thank you very much. I'll take my, my goddamn one minute. Again, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm asking you, please do not, uh, donate any money to any real or fake fucking Jew organizations for they are the head of all the worldwide terrorisms. They are in collusion with the city council members, the FBI.
Please, please, shh, hold her time. Hold her time. Look, to everybody that's here, we, no, Ms. Ramirez, please be quiet. To everyone that's here, we, peep, no, no, hear me now, please. Please, because I wanna hear from you later, but you have to be quiet. We listen to this every day. It is very difficult. It is very challenging. So you only have 40 seconds left. We deal with this three times a week. So for those of you that are here to speak on the other items, I am asking you to just allow, um, Ms. Ramirez to say what's on our mind. Please keep it down. I'm gonna get to all of you, I promise you, or as many of you as I can. Go ahead, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you. Heil Hitler to the fourth fucking Reich. And again, ladies and gentlemen, the fucking Jews have collaborated and in collusion with the FBI, the CIA, and the NSI, and Homeland Security. That's why they come here and they censor us. That's why we, I, live on the fucking streets. I did live at the new Bridge Housing, and for the residents around those areas, do be concerned because most, if not all of these new Bridge Housing, they are being subsidized. All of them house wetbacks and gangbangers, wetbacks and gangbangers. No decent, law-abiding citizen is living in there, and no military veteran is living in there, but fucking wetbacks and gangbangers who we are subsidizing. That's why I live on the fucking street. I got kicked out of there because I exposed the drugs and the harassment and the theft, theft.
Thank you. Your time's expired. No, your time's expired. Ms., Ms. Ramirez, now you're disrupting, so just be quiet. You got your minute. Ms., no, 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 guy, no, 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 no. Ms. Ramirez, you're dis, Ms. Ramirez, you're disrupting. Sergeants, remove, remove Ms. Ramirez and do not allow her to come back in. Ms. Ramirez, Mr. City Attorney, was warned, warned several times. So she has now been removed from this meeting. Okay, so now we're going to move to item... Mr. Corretts?
I just wanted to let people know that don't typically come to city council meetings. Um, we have lost some cases on free speech issues, and it has been rather costly to the city. So, uh... things that we have all heard today and we hear frequently at council meetings. But just so you know, the council does not necessarily agree with the terrible things that you've heard, but we are required to give each person their time. We do have some folks that come just to get a rise out of us, just to disrupt, and that's unfortunately what you heard today.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Corretts, okay, now let's move to 67.
Mr. President, so council members Weezer, Krikorian, and Price own rental property as reported on their Form 700s on file with the City Ethics Commission and the FPPC, and are recusing on this item out of an abundance of caution, so as long as Recommendation 5 is written, as written is part of this item. So I would ask that council members Weezer, Krikorian, and Price, if they're in the room, please recuse themselves.
Okay, so they are leaving. Let us take them off the queue as we go through this process.
So when they're... When we've left the room, when they've left the room, we can go.
What I'm gonna... Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Well, we have an amending motion on item 67.
So what I'm gonna do is, just so everybody's aware, I'm gonna do... We've had three years of hearings on this issue. I'm gonna reopen the hearing. We're gonna do 15 for, 15 minutes against, one minute a person. You finish your announcement, and then let me begin calling the people to come up and testify. Are you done, Mr. City Attorney? Are we good? All right, Mr. Bonin, did you want to say something before I started? Do you want to let me jump quickly into the public comment?
Let me just frame the issue a bit for everybody who's here. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. It was over three and a half years ago when Mr. Weston and I co-introduced a motion to come up with a system to regulate and govern short-term rentals here in the city of Los Angeles. There's a number of issues involved with short-term rentals, an emerging and fast-moving industry, but one that was a core issue for both me and Mr. Weston was the question of affordable housing and housing instability, which really is an issue on both sides of this debate. There are, particularly in my district, when we introduced this motion, a phenomenon of de facto hotels coming in, evicting large numbers of people, having a tremendous impact upon the rental inventory in a number of communities. In Venice, there is actually a lost housing tour, all the homes that have been lost to rogue hotel operators coming in and evicting unmasked large groups of people. On the other hand, we heard from a number of people, also in my district, who are using genuine home sharing of their primary residence to help make ends meet, to pay medical bills, to stay in their home, and to not be forced out of the communities and the neighborhoods they have lived in for a very, very long time. So as we went through this process, we have tried to find a way to make a distinction between good short-term rentals and bad short-term rentals. Good short-term rentals being genuine home sharing, people sharing their home to make their ends meet. Bad short-term rentals being the rogue hotel operators who are robbing the residents of this city of rental housing and making gentrification worse and making the affordable housing crisis worse. So the distinction that the council came up with was to limit short-term rentals to somebody's primary residence. So it would allow genuine home sharing, but prohibit the rogue hotels from taking place. And the key to that was coming up with an enforceable system, as opposed to what is a blanket prohibition now that is absolutely unenforceable and doesn't work for anybody. When we came up with that distinction between the good and the bad, there were issues that came up from folks who said, "This still does not protect my ability to use my primary residence and help make ends meet." And then there were folks from the neighborhoods who said, "This might be too much. We don't want unlimited because we don't want to lose the character of neighborhoods." So the committee, the Plum Committee, came up with a proposal, went back and forth with CPC, to cap at 120 days. Then some folks said, "Well, that's too strict for me." And so the council and CPC said, "We will come up with a ministerial process, not a discretionary process, a ministerial one, that if you have a good record as a short-term rental host in your primary residence, we will allow you to go above that cap. If you have citations, however, and if you have been a bad actor, then you have to go through a discretionary process, and you may not, or you may or you may not, get the ability to extend beyond 120 days." All sorts of details like that in this proposal. The key to this, though, has been enforceability. The city, I am the first to admit, does not have a great track record in enforcing a lot of the legislation that we approve. Currently, there's a prohibition against short-term rentals, and it's absolutely unenforceable. The key to the enforceability provision of this ordinance is the registration number, that units that are genuinely allowed, that are primary residents, that meet the criteria, get a valid certified registration number from the city of Los Angeles, saying you are allowed to be a host. And if you book a unit without a valid registration number, that is an offense. To make this work, the city is going to have to, most likely, use a third party to help us come up with a robust enforcement system, and I'm confident that we will do that. This before us today, this ordinance, is far from perfect. I don't know that there is anybody from Keep Neighborhoods First who is jumping for joy today, and I don't know that there are any of the hosts who are jumping for joy either, because this does not satisfy anybody 100%. But this comes about as close as this body can come after years of work to striking a balance between those interests. This industry, all these digital platforms, whether it's scooters, or bikes, or home sharing, moves a lot faster than government does. So we are going to have to, after six months or a year, revisit this ordinance and find out where it works and where it's weak, and tweak it and revise it to adjust to the reality on the ground, to make sure that what we are passing today does its intended job of protecting rental housing and preserving our neighborhoods while allowing people who are genuinely trying to use their personal property, their primary residence, to make ends meet and take care of their families and stay in the neighborhoods that they love, make sure that that happens. So I'm sure here's some testimony, have a robust discussion, and I look forward to finally getting this done today.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Okay, Charlie, Charlie Carnow, Becky Dennison, Rabaya Sin, Susan Hunter, Trinidad Ruiz, Cynthia Straffman, David Ewing. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good morning. Again, my name is Charlie Carnow. I'm a research analyst for Unite Here Local 11, the Hospitality Workers Union. We full-heartedly endorse this ordinance. L.A. has lost over 10,000 units to short-term rentals, worsening our affordable housing crisis, which threatens to push even more people into homelessness. We would just ask that this ordinance be put into effect as soon as possible. July 1st was what was in the draft before the Plum changes last week. We can't wait for another ordinance that has not yet been written, there's been no vetting of, the so-called vacation rentals ordinance, to pass to address this crisis, and we urge you to act today. Vote this, vote on this, and protect our housing stock. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Susan Hunter, Los Angeles Tenant Union Hollywood Local, and I'm here today to deliver a very specific message. We are concerned that there is tampering with removing protections of RSO housing with this ordinance, and we are concerned that there is a tampering with the implementation date that was originally agreed on to be this coming summer. If this ordinance is passed today without an implementation date or with any removal of protections of RSO housing, the Los Angeles Tenant Union will be calling for a global boycott against Airbnb usage in the city of L.A., and we already have preliminary support from tenant unions across the globe. So we're asking you today to do the right thing. Implement this immediately. Don't wait any longer than the summer, and do not touch the RSO housing stock that we so desperately need. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next. Come on, I want to get everybody to speak. Yes, Becky.
Good morning. I'm Becky Dennison with Venice Community Housing. I've been working on tenant rights in the city for a long time, and this is a crucial tenant rights ordinance moving forward today, as long as the RSO protections remain and as long as there is a clear implementation date of summer at the latest. We certainly cannot pass ordinances that are dependent on things that we know nothing about. This ordinance protects tenants in neighborhoods that have seen massive displacement, and particularly in Venice on the West Side, but not solely in our neighborhood. Across the city, we must do more to protect units and protect tenants, and this is a step. And if we don't do things like this, all the things we're doing around bridge housing and homelessness will be for nothing because more and more folks will be pushed onto our streets. So vote yes today, remove the delay out of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Cynthia Straffman. I'm with Strategic Actions for Ajust Economy. We work on tenant rights in South Los Angeles, and we're urging the council to pass this ordinance today, including strong protections for RSO residents and also with a firm implementation date. I think it goes without saying that in the middle of a housing and homelessness crisis, we need all the housing that we can get, and converting it into hotel rooms is really not the smart move. So we urge you to pass it as it was voted on unanimously back in May with the RSO protections and with a firm implementation date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So before the next speaker, if I could get Gina Chrusenbot, Sissy Trin, Amanda Seward, and Sylvia Roth. Yes.
Hello, my name is Trinidad Ruiz, and I represent Power People Organized for West Side Renewal, as well as Ground Game L.A. We're here to advocate for the vote on this ordinance today, to go into effect today, to pass today. We are currently organizing in a building that's been turned into a de facto hotel, a short-term rental in Venice. We've seen 85% reduction in that building of tenants, and it's just unconscionable that this is happening. I don't know who these folks are here with the blue t-shirts that allow people into their homes, but the tenants that we deal with are being evicted for having children, for getting married, because there's unlawful occupants, and it's awful out there. And so we really need this ordinance. Thank you.
Yes.
Good morning, council members. My name is David Ewing. I'm just a resident and homeowner. I know you're all deeply concerned about our city's crisis of housing and homelessness, particularly from the item that came before. Thousands of units have been removed from the housing supply by short-term rentals, as you're aware, and tenants pushed to the street. So it's hard to fathom how someone's desire for extra income from a second home would be given equal urgency with the need to control the housing loss by regulating short-term rentals, yet that's exactly what happened at Plum last week. So please do not allow the vacation rental ordinance to delay the home sharing ordinance any longer. Isn't three and a half years long enough to wait? I mean, this should have been triage. Don't let this ordinance hold the home... Vacation rental ordinance, hold the home sharing ordinance hostage.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please get this done.
Thank you. So if I can get before the next speaker, Mike Sud, Laura Raymond, Diana Cruz, Gloria Col... Lonzo. Yes. Identify yourself.
Oh, good morning. I'm Gina Chrusenbot with the Thai Community Development Center, and we work with individuals and families struggling to stay in their homes due to the housing crisis. The short-term rental market incentivizes landlords to displace low-income tenants in favor of renting units on the short-term rental market. We need regulation now. Up to 3,400 homes have been taken off the market since city council approved the ordinance in May. To provide a longer timeline, 15% of the rent-stabilized housing stock has been built since the '70s. We not only face a constrained supply of units overall, but we also risk losing RSO units. Please pass regulations unanimously passed by the council, 15-0 in May, and keep the effective date July 1st, 2019. Every day we delay implementing regulations worsens the housing crisis. Having previously agreed to these regulations, we hope you seize the opportunity to begin protecting low-income community members. Thank you, and thank you for pronouncing my name correctly.
I got one right. All right. Yes.
Hi, I'm Amanda Seward, and I'm here on behalf of Keep Neighborhoods First and the Venice Housing Corporation, and myself as a lawyer who has represented a lot of tenants who have been bullied or tried... The landlords have tried to bully out the tenants in order to do short-term rentals. So I understand the impact on housing, and we're in a critical housing shortage right now. This is an easy thing to do, to try to stop what's going on. We need it passed yesterday, last year, two years ago, and we cannot wait any longer. No more delays. We need it now to protect housing, and we need to make sure that it is prohibited, in the short term at least, in RSO housing, because all that does, if you allowed it in rent-stabilized units, the landlords ultimately want to evict their long-term tenants to make more money in the short term. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Sissy Trin. I work at the Southeast Asian Community Alliance, and we do youth organizing in Chinatown and Northeast L.A. A lot of our families are one rent increase away from becoming homeless, and the crisis has gotten so bad that our students are now choosing to fail their classes because they don't want to ask their parents for school supplies. This is a huge crisis. We're also hearing trends of landlords converting homes into short-term rentals, which just adds to the burden that our members are already facing. Airbnb has kind of talked about and touted this policy as, or not regulating, as generating a couple hundred or a couple thousand dollars per unit for the city. Well, for us, that means that the city is actually spending tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, having to rehouse our families who are at risk of homelessness. We need this ordinance today, and we need to make sure that RSOs are not included. Thank you.
Thank you. So Sylvia, we meet again.
Sylvia Roth, we meet again. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Longtime resident of Venice and on the board of Venice Community Housing. Mike, thank you for all the work that you've done on this, and I think you gave a great explanation. I do not understand why this needs to be linked to another vacation ordinance that hasn't even been started, hasn't even come up yet. No work has been done on it. We are hemorrhaging housing at Venice Community Housing. We are trying to build housing. Never gonna happen fast enough if we don't do something immediately. We have to enforce this in July, and I don't really... I really don't understand why so much... Why people that are renting rooms in their homes to help support their mortgages or whatever they're doing, they've always been able to rent rooms. Why do they have to have vacation rentals there now? I mean, come on, it's always worked.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name's Laura Raymond. I'm the director of ACT L.A. We're a broad coalition that's worked on many different affordable housing policies in the city to ensure more affordable homes are built, such as Measure JJJ, the Affordable Housing Linkage Fee. So our coalition, we know we need to build more affordable units, but at the end of the day, we also know the need for low-cost housing, it's so great, that we can't produce our way out of this. In the city of L.A., this is especially stark, since we're losing more affordable units than we're producing right now. So we cannot afford to continue to remove thousands of rental units from the market via an unregulated short-term rental industry. We urgently need short-term rental regulation without further delay. So we urge you to pass the regulations unanimously passed by this body in May, and please keep the effective date July 1st, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Gloria Colazo. I'm the regional director for the Chamber of Commerce of Southern California of Ecuador. This is a much-needed ordinance to regain control of our neighborhoods from the currently completely unregulated short-term rentals SDR industry. Short-term rentals are not going away, so the city must do all we can to protect our housing and our communities. We need these regulations because L.A. is in the middle of extreme housing crisis. There is simply not enough housing, and SDR makes matters worse. I support real people using home sharing in their own homes to make extra money, but we must stop the commercial operators. Some commercial operators evict current long-term tenants in favor of renting out so more lucrative short-term renters, and some guests do not act like good neighbors. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this time, and I hope you take this comment in consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. If we could have the next speaker come forward and identify yourself, and then have at it.
Morning. My name is Diana Cruz. I'm here on...
I'm here on my personal capacity as a lifelong tenant. My mother and I are currently in the process of being displaced from a home in Koreatown. My family's been in the neighborhoods since the 1960s, and this is the second no-cause eviction my mother has faced within the past 14 years. We're desperately seeking stability but cannot afford relocating within our own neighborhood. Our best hope right now is to find a rent-controlled unit to help ensure that we do not suffer through this again. If we're working towards finding solutions to address the housing crisis, removing units from the RSO is not the answer. Please take immediate action to protect housing and the RSO, not just for myself and my mom, but every tenant that's facing eviction and potential homelessness. Thank you for your time.
Yes, identify yourself.
My name is Mike Sud. I'm in the 11th District in Venice. I'm a longtime volunteer with Venice Community Housing, and I just wanted to support the measure and just urge you to implement it without adding any further complications from other types of rental housing. The quicker the better. We have a homeless crisis that everyone recognizes, and all options should be on the table. But I can't exactly condone people renting out second homes, and that's not going to really take care of the problem, and they don't need it. We need, I'd actually prefer if we actually kept our, as it is, the 30-day minimum rental for housing, but that doesn't seem to be enforceable. So again, just pass this quickly, implement it quickly, and thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Spindler, take a seat. Your name was not called. Please take a seat. Mr. Spindler, take a seat. You're disrupting now. Take a seat.
Council members, out of respect for my council member, David Rue, I waive my opportunity to speak, but I had my time. I had one idea, and why don't we ask the hotels to have a portion or percentage of their rooms for affordable housing? That would be great. That's just a personal note. Thank you.
Do we have Rockland, a Mr. Rockland, Brett Rockland? Okay. Or Bert, Brett Rockland? Okay, now we'll move over to the other side. Lauren Vu, Robin Cole, Linda Lewin, Rhonda Hayter, Leslie Hope, Heather Carson, Bob Wexler. Yes. If I call you, try to make your way down. Yes. Identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Lauren Vu. I'm a vacation rental host. From my own personal experience, not all vacation hosts are bad actors. I have a great deal of respect for all of my neighbors. All of my neighbors are aware of anybody that we allow into our home, and they approve it. We make sure that we rent to families that are either in hardship and just want to stay quietly for a while, or people who otherwise wouldn't be able to take a vacation because vacationing with children for longer than a week in a hotel just isn't feasible. We've taken in families that have been displaced from either floods. We recently even had forensics, fire, and explosive investigators rent our home to come out to investigate the Hills fires. So there's a lot of good that does come out of it. This is not a home that... Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Hello, my name's Rhonda Hayter, and my husband and I have owned a duplex in the Miracle Mile for 20 years. We rent the upper unit long-term. We live in the lower unit, but it's an RSO building. When I was downsized from my job right before my son started college, we found ourselves in terrible trouble, but since we started renting out one of the boy's bedrooms, we're back on our feet. We do Airbnb because we need it, because LA is becoming increasingly unaffordable, and we need it to survive. Please, please don't tar us with the same brush as the bad actors. There should be no caps on owner-occupied RSO buildings, and there should be affordable fees. Preventing me from renting a room in my own home will not put any RSO stock back on the market.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yes.
Leslie Hope. A recent LA Times article reported that LA hotels have received close to $1 billion in tax breaks over the past 10 years. Yet in the face of record hotel occupancy and taxpayer subsidies, hotel workers across LA are calling out hotels for not paying them enough to live in this city. So to be clear, this debate is not about making housing affordable. If it were, then everyone in this room would be in favor of working together to regulate short-term rentals, including vacation rentals. Instead, it's about a hotel industry that seeks to protect its profits and monopolize the visitor industry by restricting short-term rentals, which, by the way, make up only a quarter of a percent of Los Angeles' housing stock. Instead of a piecemeal approach, I urge you to pass a comprehensive short-term rental policy that regulates all hosts and protects valuable housing stock for Angelenos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Heather Carson. I'm a tenured resident of Silver Lake who has served my community for the last five years on the Neighborhood Council. Airbnb hosts have earned $100 million for the city of LA, and yet only 5 million of it has been allocated to affordable housing. Short-term rentals make up only 1% of the rental market. If you eliminated every single one right now and turned it into long-term housing, it would be by definition unaffordable because it would be at market rate. You will not be solving anything. In fact, you will put more of your constituents into freefall and housing insecurity. Housing costs are so out of control that you can't cover the cost of your mortgage and taxes and maintenance with long-term rental income anymore. The math doesn't work. I'm 58 and been a freelance artist my whole life. This is my savings and my retirement. Cap short-term rentals at 1%, use the $100 million to create actual affordable housing, and include second homes owned by responsible individuals, not corporations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Linda Lewin, and I am privileged to live in the 11th District. Thank you, Mike, for all your hard work and all your support. I really appreciate it. I bought my home in 1986. I'm a retired senior and depend on my Social Security, my daughter's Social Security disability, and Airbnb to make ends meet. The proposed fees of $850 or upwards of $6,000 for unwarranted violations and the $5 a night charge will break me. The income from short-term rentals has allowed me to age in place and stay in my home. I urge you to create a fee structure that is reflective to my hardship. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I ask you, ma'am? Ma'am? Can I ask you to identify yourself, please, just so I can check you off the list? What's your name again?
I'm sorry, it's Linda Lewin.
Linda, okay, thank you so much. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is David Darwish. I'm opposed that proposal. I'm an Airbnb provider and have wonderful experience with guests. Without this guest, we won't be able to be in business or pay our bills. There are no shortage of housing. There are plenty of housing. The problem is, there are no cheap housing, because everything is expensive. The city is pulling a lot of money for low income, for $500 to $600 million a year. Why don't you buy apartment building and house people that cannot afford? But instead of that, you're going after small mom-and-pop businesses. That proposal, that proposal came from the Gestapo. The city is acting like Gestapo. I mean, you couldn't write worse than that. People cannot be in their yard over 10 people after 10 o'clock. What happens if we have a big family? Are you out of your mind?
Good morning, ma'am. What is your name?
Robin Cole, CDA, single-family homeowner with a spare room. I appreciate the city's time in hammering out the ordinance. However, I respectfully request when determining registration fees, you remember the little guy who can't grease palms? If proposed $800 fee isn't reevaluated to prepare to perhaps a cottage food operator rate, I will be disenfranchised. We can't pay the exorbitant fee, income, TOT tax, and charge the uncategorized $5 a night guest fee. Citizens, stop blaming socially responsible hosts for housing crises. We are helping.
She has time left. Hi, my name is Brian Burke. I'm not on welfare. I'm not on food stamps. I do not receive a penny of government assistance. I'm not asking for help, but I'm here today to ask you not to hurt me, not to hurt us. Tax-paying Airbnb hosts, and this law will definitely hurt us. I'm 56 years old, and Airbnb is my job. I was unemployed, and it was scary. I could not find a job. Then I heard about Airbnb, and I've since then used my only asset, my home, to create a job for myself. If you pass this law with all these extra expenses and restrictions, you'll be essentially firing me and very likely causing me to default on my mortgage, effectively potentially making me homeless. This is not hyperbole. In addition, I have never had a single complaint at my home. It's a triple-win situation that's been created here by Airbnb. A win for Airbnb, which has become an amazing socially conscious company. A win for me, because I have a way of making a living. A win for the guests who can visit our great, extremely expensive city at a reasonable price. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have time for another seven public speakers. I'm going to start with three first. Bob Wexler, are you here? Wexler, are you here? Do you want to come forward, sir?
I signed up.
I know, I just called you. I just called you to come and speak. Are you Bob Wexler?
Yes.
I understand you... Sir? Sir, can you please take a seat? I'm actually going through the list, and I have another seven names that I'm going to call. Bob Wexler, are you here?
I waived my time. Thank you.
Bob, you're Bob?
Yeah, I'm Bob.
Okay, you're not speaking?
Well, I think you... I wait, out of respect for Councilman Rue, I waived my time earlier. Thank you.
Penelope Lopez? Penelope? Are you here? Tammy? Tammy, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Carlos Aguilar? Carlos Aguilar? Carlos Aguilar here? Sylvia Rath? Sylvia Rath? Mr. Spindler, I need you to be quiet, or I'm going to ask you to leave.
Yeah, we've actually received complaints about Mr. Spindler, Mr. Herman.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, you're gone. Sergeant, can you please remove Mr. Spindler from our council meeting? He continues to shout from the back room. So Tammy, Carlos Aguilar, you're not here? How about Sylvia Rath?
Tammy's here.
Sylvia, are you here?
Yeah.
Sir, what is your name in the back? Did I call your name?
No, but I signed up.
I understand you signed up, but I only have...
It works with the speaker system. Down, up, down.
No, it was not up and down. I'm calling the names that I have left. We only have six more minutes of remaining public comment on this issue. I'm only calling the people on this list now, sir. If I not called your name, please sit down. Tim Snowbird? Tim Snowbird, are you here?
My name is Sam.
I understand that, ma'am. I'm just getting through the list. Tim, are you here?
Yes.
So how many is that? One, two, three, four. Okay, why don't we go ahead? Tammy, you have one minute.
My representative, is he going to be here soon, Paul Parrot?
Sir, ma'am, I don't know. If you have one minute, can you please speak through the issue?
No, okay. Great. First, I would like to say that I support fair and sensible regulations of the short-term rentals, and I hope you include a way homeowners like me to continue to share the rooms, rooms in our home for 365 days, since we have bills 365 days of the year. I feel the additional fee to lift the proposed 120 cap must be reasonable and affordable, not the $850 in the current proposal. And the initial registration fee for home sharing is set at $89 for 120 days. Why not double that extended home-sharing fee to $179 for the additional 245 days? This is a fairer and affordable alternative to hosts who depend on the income from their homes for economic survival or take some of the $100 million the city of Los Angeles has taken from the 14% tax. I also urge you to reconsider the per-night surcharge. This could amount to more than $1,500 per year for hosts who share... Damn it.
Thank you. Are you Penelope Lopez?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. My name's Penelope, and it's my twin sister America, and we're here to speak for our parents who can't attend today. All right, guys? We're like working immigrant-class family, and you guys are basically telling us, like, remove the low-income homeowners away from the market, even using their only asset that they know they can depend on. And you guys are saying, like, for responsible RSO home primary residents to not be in the playing field at all. It's like, we're already feeling excluded from tech, we're already excluded from this one, and the city's going to make us feel very excluded from opportunities where we know we can, like, have better chances for us to have, like, you know, a better American dream. Like, my parents already became American citizens and ones already trying to go through the pathway while this troubling time in our country. And right now, we're having a troubling time through our city, and I just wanted to make sure you guys hear that, please, don't hurt my family.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Rath. I'm an Airbnb host with my husband in Venice. Hi, Mike. I want to say that I'm glad to have some legislation to get rid of the bad operators. I'm for bridge housing. I'm for the Venice community housing. I'd like to volunteer for the homeless, but I can't take the hit. I don't want to become one of the homeless. We struggle. I'm a preschool teacher, don't make a lot of money. My husband's retired. We keep our back garage conversion because our son has a health condition where he has to come home. We don't want to have to throw anybody out. We need the income to be able to age in place. We are the Venice community. We want to stay in it. Our neighbors are glad that we're doing it. They don't want to see us sell up our house to some developer and have a huge McMansion built there. We are part of Venice. Please keep us there. Thank you.
Council President, I was actually signed up for the previous minutes, but my name was called now, and I was in support of adopting the original ordinance, if you'll allow me to speak. If not, I understand.
Go ahead.
Carlos Aguilar with Coalition for Economic Survival. This new vacation rental proposal is just an Airbnb-sponsored...
Oh, no, 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 that I can't do. Relax, relax, relax. I got it. Shh. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. If I could add a next speaker.
Yeah, thank you.
Next speaker. Yes.
Hello, my name is Tim Snowbird, and I've been a vacation rental host in Silver Lake since 2010, and in that time, paid more than $125,000 in TOT. My property was built in 1922 and is therefore governed by rent stabilization. I urge you to include RSO units in any home-sharing and vacation rental regulations. Visitors come to LA for a variety of reasons. We offer families and other travelers a comfortable and welcoming place to stay. In our situation in particular, we have several frequently returning families that have members who have suffered strokes. They return to us because their kids' homes are on stair streets, and the grandparents are unable to actually get to those homes. Our places have provided a familiar and accessible space in which to celebrate birthdays and holidays with their grandkids. We look forward to regulations that will allow us to continue serving our neighbors and the city. Please include RSO buildings and vacation rentals in the regulations. Thank you.
Hi, I'll be brief. My name is Bee Darwish, and I had apartments for rent, but I was brutalized by the Housing Department for over 30 years. I could not tolerate it any longer, and that's why I utilize Airbnb, because of the tyrants at the Housing Department, and I think you know who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Chanel? Come on down. Take your time.
My name is Chanel Blake. I have a fourplex in Lamont Park. I have never evicted anyone to do a short-term rental. I also take issue with being called a bad actor because I want to home-share in my units and not in a place where I live personally, because I'm a single woman with children, and for safety reasons, I opt not to do that. I don't think that makes me a bad actor. I originally visited... I originally visited Council President Wesson's office to discuss this issue and asked, what was the start of this problem? In that conversation, I was told that this started with large commercial operators in Venice that initiated this. I don't think any of those large commercial operators are here, because they are not affected by the passing of this legislation, the same way that small operators are. We're the ones that are gonna pay the price for the legislation that's, that's passed here, so I asked that it be fair, it be balanced, and be considerate. The rent stabilization ordinance, it does not equate to affordable housing. It doesn't make anything affordable. Like the lady said, if I were to put my units on the market today, they'd be at market rate and would not be affordable for anyone.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So, that concludes public comment. Mr. City Attorney on both sides.
Thank you. So, what's before the council now is amending motion 67A, um, which would, uh, strip the, from the proposed ordinance, references to vacation rentals. So, the ordinance, and, and the ordinance that would go forward would have an effective date not tied to any future action regarding vacation rentals. I recommend that we vote on item 67, the amendment, uh, not the entirety of the item, just whether we're approving 67A, amending what's before the council.
Thank you for that. Okay, so, members, that will be our first vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. City Attorney, uh, next.
Yeah, well, in fact, with that change, there no longer is a need to recuse Mr. Krikorian or Weezer or Price, so they can come back in if they want to.
If they're in the back, please, uh, return, members. Is there not a request to send an item to committee as well? Do we deal with that at this point? Okay, so, you wanna reference?
Well, there's a, um, a second amendment, which is 67B, which, um, I believe is the one you're referring to, is possibly referring it to committee.
So, without objection, that's what we'll do on that.
This one, I wanted to ask staff about it.
Okay, well, we'll do that. Staff, come forward.
So, on this one, I just, I wanted to understand, the reason why I put this amendment forward is that the past May, the council approved a proposed home sharing ordinance that treated accessory dwelling units, uh, the same. All ADUs could be used for home sharing if the primary resident was the host. Then the CPC removed the primary residency requirement for the ADUs, um, to allow, to make an exemption there, and I don't understand the inconsistency, so the, the question is, why are we exempting ADUs from the primary residency requirement?
Arthi Varma, Department of City Planning. Uh, as you noted, the staff, original recommendation was to allow, uh, short-term rentals and ADUs only if it was a primary residency. The City Planning Commission voted to amend the ordinance to allow, uh, accessory dwelling units, even if it was not the primary residency, only if those ADUs were permitted before January 1st, 2017. That is the date where new state legislation came into effect to facilitate the, the building of ADUs.
But what, what makes them different, what, why should we, if we exempt primary residents, which I understand and I support that concept, why, why do we treat these primary, these, these differently, that they don't have to be a primary residence?
The intent of City Planning Commission's amendment was to allow the several hundred ADUs that have been permitted in the city prior to January 1st, 2017. Since January 1st, we've had several thousand ADUs permitted, so I think CPC's intent was to allow this relatively smaller pool of non-primary residency ADUs.
So, the only reason for putting this amendment in is it, it just, the inconsistency didn't make any sense to me in terms of why we're carving out one, uh, piece that is, doesn't have to be a primary residence.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. So, that, without objection, will be referred to committee. Okay, so now we'll open up a conversation on the larger issue. Mr. Coretts?
Actually, I primarily wanted to speak, speak to the smaller issue that you just dealt with. Granny flats are typically, have been called that before, because they were intended for family members. They were not intended for, uh, the purpose of turning themselves into detached hotel units, as they are now. Um, I don't think there's a, a real reason why we would give away the several hundred units that could be, uh, part of our housing stock, um, as, uh, the problem we've had on a broader level, with, uh, many thousands of units being lost to, uh, our short-term rental problem. Um, I think it's critical that we pass this today, because we found ways to delay this over and over, and every day we wait, more units are taken off the market, and more units become home sharing. Um, and, uh, while I think it can be a positive, where people actually live in their units, and they rent a room, and there are many people in that circumstance where I think it makes sense, um, to, uh, allow people to do whole home rentals, to allow them to evict all their tenants, and, uh, do whole apartment building rentals, and turn them into hotels. Um, we have lost thousands and thousands of units, we've contributed to homelessness, we've contributed to the higher prices that make the city so unaffordable, and we have to take action today to, to change this. I thank you, Mr. Bonin, for shepherding this effort, uh, for the time we have, but now it's time to take action.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, yes, Mr. Bonin, it's been a three-and-a-half-year slog, and I know that, uh, it's, it's been that way for a reason. This is not easy, there, it's very complicated. Um, a one-size-fits-all probably isn't gonna work, so you've done the best you can with what we have in an emerging, um, an entirely new, um, industry, uh, and that is the shared economy. And I am not an enemy of the shared economy at all, because home sharing, uh, is part of Los Angeles's, um, identity at this point. And... So, uh, to planning, I have, uh, a few questions. I've narrowed them way down, because so much has been answered, and I've heard a lot of the very, very, uh, structured and, um, uh, well, uh, respected comments from, from people who have, are living in this world. Um, one of the questions I have is in relation to, um, hosted stays with no limits and enforcement. So, is the argument against allowing hosted stays with no limits at all, um, is, is the argument that there's a lack of enforcement ability? And if you could please explain that, or address how you develop that rationale?
Arthi Varma, Department of City Planning. Uh, you're correct, the, the enforcement on hosted stays would be difficult, uh, to implement. Uh, the enforcement would have to occur, uh, in actual, real time, uh, and the ability to do that, uh, by our enforcement agency would be limited.
So, everyone who registers would have to have a registration number, um, but would the enforcement piece be complaint-driven, like so many other things that are on our books as far as ordinances and laws?
So, there's a, uh, there, and complaint-driven would be a portion of the enforcement, a second piece of the enforcement would be that hosts would not be permitted to advertise without a registration number, uh, so we would be taking a look at those advertisements to ensure that there was a registration number posted, and there could be, um, a violation of the ordinance if that's not occurring.
All right. Another question is the term wholesale vacating of apartment buildings, which have in effect created de facto hotels. Um, the regulations proposed in this ordinance will stop that by limiting one listing per person's primary residence. Can, can you, can you talk about the transit, rather transient occupancy residential structures, or the tours, and how this provision will be baked into this ordinance, which would prohibit hotel conversions of existing buildings, um, but would only allow future conversions for new construction? So, in other words, we've had some issues. The Via Carlotta stands out as a famous example of a hotel conversion, where they invoked the, um, ability and permission to do conversions. But it's my understanding, and, and maybe you can elaborate or, or verify this, that part of this ordinance would prohibit that.
Arthi Varma, Department of City Planning, that's correct. Uh, the, the council, uh, directed staff to include in the ordinance, uh, the prohibition of conversions of existing dwelling units into transient occupancy residential structures, so that is a component of this ordinance to prevent that conversion into tours.
So, it closes that loophole, and maybe it's in, within the report somewhere, or maybe you could come back, uh, that is one of the reasons why we've lost so much RSO over the decades, probably in the multi-thousands. A lot of constituents will come to me and say, what am I doing to, uh, address that? And when we have prospective, um, uh, real estate groups that are gonna buy an RSO building, I've always just said, don't put it in escrow, 'cause I will never support a conversion. But I think that what people need to understand is there is a law that allows that. Um, and, and so, um, I just, I, I think one really good part of this is that, that will now become an ordinance that would prohibit that.
Time, check your time.
Yeah, thank you. And then, um, one of the questions I have, or one of the concerns I have, is we've heard, colleagues, we've heard this a lot in, in testimony that's been given. We have people who ha, are doing home sharing in, in single-family homes, who struggle to make a living for a variety of reasons. We had someone come in on Friday, a mom who was divorced, who's putting her daughter through college, but really struggles to pay her mortgage. My concern, and I understand it's gonna be referred to budget and finance, and I'm glad, is the fee structure. Um, and I would, I would definitely like that looked at, uh, if you wanna go above the 120 days, because we do have people, and I have a neighbor who does this, um, and it is a real concern. We don't want people to be forced to sell their homes, and they, mind you, in this economy, they can get a lot of money for a home almost anywhere in LA, but they don't wanna move, and we don't want them to move. So, I'd like, uh, to, the fee structure to be explored in terms of some of the concerns that were brought up. And lastly, um, and I've asked for a report on this, and I've talked with, uh, Chair Marquise Harris-Dawson about, uh, hearing this in Plum. I have a letter from a property owner who has a fourplex, it's under RSO, he rents his spare bedroom in his unit only, but he has leases on the other three units. If we prohibit all RSO, would he no longer be allowed to do that?
Arthi Varma, the current ordinance prohibits, uh, rental, uh, even of your own unit, if it's under the RSO, if it's, if it's under the RSO ordinance.
All right. So, colleagues, I think there's a very small universe that something like this would fall under, but it, it is out there, uh, and, um, I, I look forward to that being explored, uh, in committee as well. All right? Thank you.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, this is a long time coming. I really wanna thank all of our colleagues and on the Plum and Housing Committee for working on this for the past three years to develop a reasonable and thoughtful regulations for the short-term rental industry. I also wanna thank the Department of, uh, City Planning and the City Attorney's Office for working with all of us to get this ordinance here today. We've come a very long way, and in front of us is a solution that would create workable standards and regulations for the short-term rental market. It's not a perfect solution, but it's a step, but it's a, but it's a, but it's in the right step to take. It creates opportunities for residents to engage in the short-term rental market and generate some additional income, while at the same time being conscious of the needs to preserve and prioritize our affordable and market-rate housing stock for Angelenos who need a home. While I am supportive of the ordinance that is before us, it will be more critical to monitor the program as it rolls out in the second half of 2019. And as the program moves forward, we'll be looking to Councilmember Krikorian and other members of the Budget and Finance Committee to ensure that this program receives the staffing, enforcement, and resources it needs to remain effective. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bonin, I wanted to thank you, uh, for framing the conversation so eloquently, the way you did before we engaged in, uh, in the, uh, public hearing today, but, uh, as you also noted in your commentary, that there's, as we continue to engage in the rollout of this ordinance, we're gonna find ourselves in opportunities for tweaking and amending, so that we could adjust this to make sure that we do have, in fact, the right, that strike the right balance. As noted, and some, many of my colleagues have already indicated, we have a finite and limited amount of housing stock, much of which has contributed to the incredible lack of affordability that we have in this city, much of it has contributed to our homelessness crisis, and much of it stemming from a downward spiral that occurred more than a decade ago. But yet, we still find ourselves in this circumstance today, and my biggest concern is, and, uh, my colleagues, Mr. Coretts and Mr. Blumenfield, uh, you know, your comments as it relates to the ADUs is one that I'm particularly concerned about, because I really identify that as an opportunity for our quickest way to provide housing for many of the most vulnerable among us, more importantly, most of the individuals that are finding themselves displaced because of the other conversions that have taken place. It provides some of that critical housing opportunities that so many Angelenos who live and work in this city every day find themselves struggling to identify throughout our city. And so, it is for that reason, I recognize that right now we are having the conversation about this going back to committee, but I think it's a really important part of the conversation that we need to address today, because when I look at the conversations that we're having in tandem when it relates to bridge housing and all of our other needs, that we are not constructing units fast enough, and ADUs are a very important part of that housing stock. And so, uh, with that, colleagues, I just wanted to make sure that I put myself on the record to, uh, make very clearly where I think ADUs stand as it relates to our housing stock in the City of Los Angeles, because the people who live and work in this city every single day are struggling to find that opportunity to have a residence to put over their head that is affordable. And I think it's really important that, as a city, we prioritize that population, rather than the population that is only gonna be visiting here for a very short time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonin, to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. To close, I just want to make sure that, uh, credit goes where credit is due. Uh, I appreciate that a number of folks have sort of acknowledged my role in this, but, uh, it was a lot of people who were involved in this. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Wesson, uh, and Justin on his team for all the work that they put into this. He was my co-sponsor, and was as engaged every step of the way as, as I. Uh, and Mr. Weezer, uh, and Sean, and Kevin before him on his staff, uh, from day one. Uh, and poor Mr. Harris-Dawson got roped into this at the, the last minute a couple weeks ago. Uh, and I also wanna acknowledge Tricia Keen on my staff, who worked on this relentlessly. And it, it can't go without repeating the incredible role of the Planning Department and the City Attorney's Office, and everyone in both of those agencies that worked so hard on this. Lot of folks helped put this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this, members?
And just to make clear, so, 67Bs referred to committee, so the, we're voting on item 67 as amended by 67A.
Yes, we are. On this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, so that is approved? Let's move to the special, just announce.
Mr. President, and I'll call the roll. Blumenfield, Bonin, Biscayno, Sadio, Engli, nor Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ru, Wesson. 15 members present, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you. Okay, uh, and we, we have a card from Mr. Herman, I believe, on this item?
Um, Mr. President, the first item, 77, is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
So, let's vote on that, let's open the roll. Oh, no, before we do that, I'm so sorry. Ms. Martinez?
President, um, members, this item is very, very important. What we'll be doing today with your support is, is a reimbursement rate of the sexual assault response team, also known as START exams, that would be... That would be, what we are doing is adjusting the rate to reflect the importance of these exams. These rates have not been adjusted in almost 16 years. Should I just wait till these folks leave?
Yes, we could do that. Sergeants, if we could please tell our guests as they're exiting to keep it down, we still have other work before this body. If we could go out and tell them, we could send somebody out, tell them to keep it down. Okay, Ms. Martinez, let's try it again.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really do think this item is very important.
I agree with you.
With your support today, reimbursement rates for our sexual assault response team, also known as ASSRT exams, will be adjusted to reflect the importance of these exams. This will be the first time in 16 years that we actually adjust the rate of these exams. I want to thank Mr. Coretz for hearing this item in your committee, sir. I want to also thank Mr. Kukorion for approving this in Budget and Finance and for being the second on my motion. The county is already moving in this direction, and our police department works with our ASSRT centers to collect forensic evidence in sexual assault investigations. These centers are staffed by nurses and physicians that carefully go through these exams and make sure that all the important information is there, because they play a really crucial role in protecting sex, in prosecuting sex crimes. So I want to thank both of my colleagues for doing this. I think it says the president, and it sends the right message, that reimbursing people for their work and making sure that we value the work that these individuals are doing, especially, especially when it comes to protecting victims of sexual assault, is a message that we should be sending. And I want to thank the county for moving in this direction already. So, members, I ask for your support in this matter so that we provide these centers with the, with the affordable adjustment, which makes sense, which is what the county is already doing, making sure we send that message. I ask for your support on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send it forth with.
Okay, so, so ordered. Let's move to the next item and call up Mr. Herman.
Item 78 and 79 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Herman.
Do I got your attention, ladies and gentlemen? Due to the relative port of Los Angeles, the administrative officer conducted in a wrongful harm of employee business. As you already know, that unions like money, lobbyists love money, and for this purpose of foreign trade zones, we have adopted, under the accordance of fucking Article II, Mr. City Attorney under fucking Section 2F of the Los Angeles SEQA Guidelines, white nigger, to approve Y at 14,000, that's 1,400, San Bernardino Avenue, the physical impact when states, for the record, that the applications fee of $5,000 in addition to the administrative fee, which I, as a legislative body, demand that we waive the 10,000 per year, for 50,000 for a one-five-year contract to the unions. I represent the union on contracts because, as you heard earlier, the city attorney couldn't follow decorum rules. And for this purpose, I or we will have three additional renewals in amendment to the contract, in objection to the city rules, along with the approval of the fucking board for the 20-year contract. So if feasible, I demand that consulting services under LLC Herman and Wayne Spender conduct the business on behalf of public interest. Fuck you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Ramirez.
77, is that it? I'm sorry.
Seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this agenda item is somewhat vague and ambiguous, but on the foreign, on the Los Angeles port, first, we must look at the daily operations. The daily, the port of Los Angeles is in dire danger because you have nothing but wetbacks and gangbangers running the entire operation.
Mr. City Attorney, again, she's not on the.
She's not, this is about a free trade zone.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. What will we do without you? Free trade. Well, again, the daily operations involving the free trade, we have mismanagement, we have waste, fraud, and abuse also there that we, as taxpayers, are paying for the so-called free trade zone. Again, the gangbangers and the wetbacks, the cartels run.
Okay, thank you. You're off-topic, Sergeant. Remove her from this meeting now. Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez, now you have moved into the realm of disruption for the second time today, Mr. City Attorney. So let us now prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
She's still disrupting the meeting, Mr. City Attorney.
She's disrupting as she leaves.
Okay, so now we will adjourn the special, return to the regular.
And now that we're going back into the regular meeting, Mr. Herman should leave because he was removed from the regular meeting.
No, I believe, I believe that was Mrs. Spender, Ms. Ramirez. All right, so, let's go back to item 48. I'll take another 10 minutes on both sides. And if you spoke earlier and by chance your name is called again, please allow someone to speak that has not spoken. Lisa Marie Nava, Jen Semino, Simonio, Jorge Valdez, Laura Saron, and Nelson or Nelsa. Please come forward. Please, if I've called you so that I can try to get everybody, as many people as I can. Patricia Lyons, come on. Yes.
Hello, good morning. My name is Lisa Marie Nava, and I'm with She Does. I am in favor of bridge housing for our homeless community because everyone should have a right to shelter and its services. It's a basic human right. Every week, we get guests at the Shower of Hope who have nowhere to turn to. This includes women and children. Bridge housing in every community is going to literally save lives. You will be saving lives. We are in a crisis, a humanitarian crisis, and bridge housing is one of the first steps in solving it. She Does.
Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself.
My name is Nelson Albert Kenke, and I am a resident of North Hollywood and member of She Does. I have come to voice my support in favor of bridge housing. I moved to LA in 2011 and a bore witness to the expanding humanitarian crisis of chronic homelessness in this city. As I left my apartment, a sprawl of tents and blankets under the overpass in the heart of downtown, tents, on the walk to City Hall, a man sleeping under his bike on Spring Street. The evidence of homelessness is everywhere, no longer in the periphery, even in the most privileged among us, and our children are met with its gaze. Bridge housing is a meaningful step forward with bridge housing in concert with new private public and volunteer programs. The homeless civilians of Los Angeles can acquire the shelter and well-being services they deserve. Let bridge housing be the change to our tendency of inaction and give birth to a new tendency to ease the struggle of homeless, of Los Angeles as a homeless community.
Thank you. Next. And I'm looking for Lon Nguyen, Rebecca Snaveley, and Barry Neely.
Hello, my name is Patricia Lyon. I'm a resident of Los Angeles, and I am in favor of bridge housing. There is increasingly numbers and numbers of homeless people as every day passes coming out on the streets, and I think that bridge housing will definitely help that situation because it's not just a shelter, it has services within it, and it's going to help a lot of people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Snaveley. I'm here with She Does. And I am a resident of the border of Silver Lake and East Hollywood, and I work in both the entertainment industry, and I run a nonprofit in Congo, so I know disparity. And I've visited Congo, and one of my partner comes here, and he sees the disparity of a rich person giving us a fundraiser and then the people sleeping on the sidewalk outside my home. He's horrified. A man from Congo is horrified. So I just want to support bridge housing because it is a humanitarian crisis, as somebody else said, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Okay, Jen Semino, or, may I help me out here? You know, I may be mispronouncing. Jorge Valdez, Laura Saron, Rodrigo Vasquez, Lon Nguyen, Barry Neely.
Last two left.
Okay, let me get, where are the other couple of folk? Please, come on up. I might have called your name earlier. Remember, we did have a mix-up, and I apologize for that. Identify yourself.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Kevin Eze, and I'm with She Does. So, LA and Southern California in general is in a very serious housing crisis. And there is no real option around what we need to do. If we do treat it as an option, I only see three. We can either do nothing, like we've been doing, and the crisis continues and it gets worse. We can leave them on the street intentionally, which is slightly more malicious and similar to the first, and we can create these five bridge housing sites, which are desperately needed to get people off the streets and to get them the housing that they need, to get them the work training that they need, to get their lives back on track and to start them up again. You know, it's necessary. It's not, it's not an option, it's mandatory. And I'm here with She Does to represent that. So She Does.
Thank you. Next speaker. The clock is ticking, so come on.
My name is Will Hawkins. I served as the chairman of the Homeless Committee for the Venice Neighborhood Council. During that time, I created a volunteer homeless reunification program that housed over 60 people through community donations. Through that volunteer work, I've seen the hopeless desolation of homelessness. I've seen lives reclaimed, I've seen lives saved, and I've seen people die on our streets while waiting for approved housing. Bridge housing will reduce homelessness, give relief to stakeholders, and save lives. Now is the time for leadership. History shows no mercy to cowards or to those who place too high a price on their comfort, safety, and security. Homelessness has become our city's raging forest fire, and we need to attack it with an urgent all-hands-on-deck mentality that makes necessary sacrifices to put this fire out. Let us be the ones who show compassion, courage, and leadership. Let us be the ones who sacrifice our own comfortable lives to save the lives of others, and let our city be the inspiration for other communities to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please.
Yes. I'm Mary Ramirez. Starting? Okay. I'm Mary Ramirez. I'm a homeless person. I live in Winnetka Village. I'm now in housing, supportive housing by path. I'm also a member of Episcopal Church, St. James in the City. I'm also a member of the Episcopal Diocese Task Force on Housing, and I am very in support of this measure, and so is the Diocese of Los Angeles, and they are looking forward to the shelter in Echo Park. Our Bishop, Diane Bruce, feeds, has feed the homeless on her lunch hour and wrote about it in our newsletter, and this is very important. Homeless people need housing. Stop the fighting. Build the housing now.
Yes, sir, please. Running out of time.
Yes, my name is Rodney Brown with Project New Life and New Life Global Development. We are developers of bridge housing, and we thank you for supporting bridge housing and the development of bridge housing. Happy birthday, by the way, Mr. President, and thank you, Curran, and where my keys go, for helping us identify the proper sites to develop this housing. We're housing and bringing them in every day, so everyone in, and I also support She Does. So thank you for your support, and we're looking for more opportunities to continue building bridge housing and permanent supportive housing, and everyone in.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, my name is Joseph Dominguez. I'm with She Does. I'd like to first pay honor to the indigenous people of the land that we're on, the Tongva folks. I'd like to give them a yee-haw. Displacement is not, it's not too unfamiliar for indigenous people, and it's going to take a community effort. And so with the Shower of Hope, which provides mobile showers, with us as case managers trying to get folks off the streets, we need the support from you guys. And so this is why we support bridge housing. We hope that we can come out with more community-based solutions. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Ann Zimmerman. I have lived in Venice since 1985 and owned my home there since 93. I am a Venice resident who supports bridge housing on the MTA site now. I understand that people are fearful about some unknown situation. Well, the known situation is it's been horrible with homeless people on our streets. Let's do it now. I think this group has a bunch of other sites. Let's put the bridge housing on all of the sites. Great ideas. Let's do it now, and now, and forever. Thank you.
Next.
My name is Chasitata Reshing, and I'm here with She Does. And I came here to support the bridge housing propositions that have been put forth. I've lived in Los Angeles for a relatively short time, but in that short period of time, I've been dismayed by the homelessness crisis that LA faces, as well as the housing crisis LA faces. Housing is our human right, and it only seems right that the homeless people living on our streets should at least have something safe, and at least until permanent housing is built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Laura Salagi. I live in Venice. I've lived there since 1972, and I am in total support of bridge housing, especially because I see more and more homeless on our streets. My particular block is selling homes for two to three or more million dollars now, and our alley is filled with homeless people. And they are, it's just, I mean, it's embarrassing, it's tragic, it's horrible, so we need to really step it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Evans. I live in Venice. I've lived there since 1996. I am totally in support of the bridge housing project. I think the MTA lot is an excellent location. There's already many, many homeless encampments in that area. They're not going to go away without some kind of solution. I think this is a good step forward.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Nina.
Hi, my name is Natalie Schuman. I'm speaking today on behalf of over thirty thousand workers represented by Unite Here Local 11, and our union and our workers stand today in support of the bridge housing, all the projects that are proposed today. We're aware that there are other, um, lots available. We, we urge the council to approve these projects and, and build as many as possible.
Thank you. Next. Come on, let's, I wanna try to get everybody, so don't be shy.
My name is Margaret Thornhill. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Venice and a homeowner. I live on Superba. We bought our house there in 1983, and there was already a significant and heartbreaking homeless problem there. I believe that there will always be homeless people attracted to Venice because of the beach, because they're looking for a place that they can at least, you know, rest, and I'm totally in support of the bridge housing project at the MTA lot in Venice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, um, my name is-
I'm gonna, let me stop, stop our time. I'm gonna go four more minutes, five more minutes for the support side, uh, because you had so many more people than I had anticipated. I have to listen to those that are against. So, if you guys, the quicker you are, the more people will be afforded an opportunity to chat. So, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the extra time. My name is Hilly Kravitz, and I am right near the, uh, proposed Venice Bridge Housing, which I wholeheartedly support. It's an excellent location that we should have the bridge housing there. Uh, I am a regular weekly volunteer with Venice Community Housing at their shelter, and they, I've seen firsthand what the impact of caseworkers and mental health workers and other health professionals, the impact that they can have on those who are facing a housing crisis, to help them to stabilize their lives and get into permanent housing. So, uh, the bridge housing would provide these professionals and caseworkers and help get people into permanent housing. So I support bridge housing. We need it now. Thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Tara Barowska. I work for Community Corp of Santa Monica. We're a nonprofit that owns and operates seventeen hundred units of affordable housing in Santa Monica. Um, I support all the bridge housing sites, and Santa Monica has over four hundred units of bridge housing and three hundred units of permanent supportive housing for homeless individuals and families. The housing is an asset to our community. They offer, they're well-designed, they offer good onsite case management with robust programs that help stabilize individuals and families. They offer opportunities for education and job training. This housing should not be feared. It should be embraced as a way to help community members experiencing homelessness become stable and to make communities safer for everyone. If every community is part of this solution, we will end homelessness. Please approve all of these bridge housing sites. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Erin Schneider, and I'm here on behalf of Supervisor Sheila Kuehl. I wanna thank this council, Councilmember Bonin, and Mayor Garcetti for your leadership on bridge housing and for your partnership with the county. We stand in strong support of the proposed sites and respectfully ask for your i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Maria Mebrajo. I live in Venice. I have a one-year-old son, and I am strongly in support of the bridge housing, uh, in Venice on the MTA lot, and I'm heartened to see other projects in other neighborhoods as well. I know the homelessness and housing crisis that's been happening throughout LA County is traumatic and has been tough on a lot of people. It's scary to see, and I've seen that firsthand in our neighborhood in Venice. But I support bridge housing, especially because I believe this is the first step for many people towards housing. It's the first step, um, for people who are homeless. It's the first step to create a more open, caring, and inclusive community as well in our own backyards, and it's important. People who are homeless are part of our community, and it's important for them to be cared for in our, in our own communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Michael Rapkin. Uh, I want the council members to please consider that the bridge housing will be a win-win situation for both the residents and the homeless neighbors. It will reduce the amount of tent encampments, personal property, and human excrement on the streets because it will now provide beds, toilets, and storage, as well as providing safety for residents and homeless people. My last point is, just a few months ago, my wife and I brought into our house a homeless couple living on the streets of Venice. They now have a bedroom, a toilet, safety, and a kitchen. If the two of us can reduce the homeless population by two people, I suggest that your thousands of constituents within your fifteen districts who want a solution to end homelessness should support a bridge housing complex located in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Frank Romero Crockett. I represent the United Way and the Everyone In campaign, and we're here to support not only Venice, but all the bridge sites, bridge home sites. Today is an important moment to move critically needed solutions to move homelessness forward. Everyone In has been so happy to work with each of the council offices to build consensus around these bridge home sites. Our commitment with this campaign is to partner with anyone who wants to bring real solutions to homelessness to their local community and forge new partnerships to make that happen. But while I'm also up here, I wanna give a quick 222 shout-out. We've updated our 222 tracker on the Everyone In website with our most recent HHH funding commitments, and fourteen of the fifteen council offices now have HHH units and are way towards their goal. And there are six council offices that have exceeded their 222 goal. In closing, we wanna thank everyone who has come out here today. There's only eight seconds left, and there's a lot of people who haven't spoken, so I wanna have everyone who supports bridge housing to stand up, and if you can't stand up, raise your hand. These are the folks, and this is the presence here, that really wanna push real solutions forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're already over, so now I'm gonna call up individuals that oppose, so if you could please take your seats, set the timer for fifteen, and let me get, uh, Carmel Beaumont, Caro Katana, Katana, uh, Solidad Urus, Jeremy Burdick, James Mares, S.A.K. Sac, Mark Knight, Tori Knight. Just come on up. Now, we're getting, we'll start out with, with fifteen, and I'll figure out how to balance it out. I'll do the best I can. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, James Mares, for the record. First of all, I'd like to speak for our neighborhood council. Um, the charter was reformed in 2000. There was a section that was added to it called 900, which created the neighborhood councils. Section 907 of that section actually talks about process and notification. Under that section, it describes how neighborhood councils are supposed to be notified with ample time to respond to any action that this body, the city council, takes. There has been zero, let me repeat that, absolutely no notification of this hearing or the previous hearings to this item. That's a violation of the charter, and that needs to go on record. The Bureau of Engineering released two documents, one on the twenty-ninth and one on the seventh. Neither of those were either notified. Uh, on a personal note, I would like to give the, uh, council a letter, uh, from myself, um, that I would like to enter into the record, and I have an extra copy for Mr. Bonin. It relates to the CEQA violations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Dar Alasky. I'm former community outreach manager for Upward Bound House, a homeless shelter for families with children. I've lived in Venice since 1968, property owner. I'd like this council to know that everybody has compassion and wants to see homeless people housed, but that the MTA lot is an irresponsible choice, and I ask my councilman, Bonin, why won't you investigate any other viable locations, one that are not temporary, one that are not going to be torn down in three years, something that is not blocks away from an international tourist destination, surrounded by residents on all four sides, and three blocks from three schools? The VNC, our neighborhood council, has not voted this in yet, and as Jim just said, there are other locations to be checked out in CD-11, and I would urge that you would do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Solidad Ersoa. I'm a Venice resident. I would, I, I sent you all, um, a Ethics 101 this morning. I hope you got a chance to review it. I would ask that you, um, ask councilmembers Kirk Corian and Bonin to remove themselves from voting, as they are members of the MTA. Um, and I would like to read from the ethics book I sent you. State law prohibits you from having a financial interest in a city contract if your duties call on you to participate in any way in the contract. Participating in preliminary discussions, planning, developing, negotiating, approving, or executing a contract is a violation of law. If you are a member of a board that acts on a contract in which you have a financial interest, severe penalties can result for the board and for the city, even if you recuse yourself. Um, council members, I ask that you, you know, just make sure that everybody follows the rules. Um, also, it has not been approved by the VNC. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Burdick. I live next to the bus yard in Venice. The exemption for the project, uh, and, the exemption for the project indicates negligible expansion of use, even though a hundred and fifty-four-bed shelter has wildly different impacts than bus maintenance or vacant land. The Venice Neighborhood Council demanded the city consider other sites, but the city has not considered any alternatives in District 11, even though they moved the Crete Town location to a lower-risk area away from homes. The mayor promises only a three-year operational term, but there is no shutdown plan, and he will not have to face Los Angeles voters again. The city also promises encampment cleanups only if we accept a shelter, but Mr. Bonin said that there are no plans to exploit bridge housing to displace encampment dwellers, and the courts would laugh at us if the city tried to enforce the law. Given the city's dubious logic, contradictory statements, weak promises, and deaf ear to the surrounding neighborhood, this project should not be approved.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Carmel Beaumont, I'm a forty-three-year, forty-three-year resident owner in Venice. I live and work approximately a hundred and fifty feet south of the MTA lot. I support providing needed assistance to our homeless neighbors, but I do not support the behavior of the criminal homeless. Mayor Garcetti promised to bring additional enforcement services to the neighbors, neighborhoods for their participation in the bridge housing program. Additional enforcement services are no longer possible due to the Ninth Circuit decision handed down in September prohibiting his solution to get rid of the encampments around the bridge housing sites. That was as much as part, a part of the plan as outreach. There is nothing to protect the neighborhoods that have bridge housing in their midst from encampments, and there's not much outreach going on for our homeless neighbors at the beach. The bridge housing program in Venice has not even started, but Garcetti's broken promises to the housed, unhoused residents of Venice have. I urge you to vote no on the CEQA waiver for the proposal project, proj, project on the MTA lot and consider the feasibility of the other sites that have been submitted.
Yes. Next.
Tori Knight, this is not about supporting bridge housing. This is about whether you guys are supporting a CEQA exemption. No, uh, proper environmental study has been done on the MTA lot, which is irresponsible. Uh, this is the only shelter, uh, that has been proposed that's surrounded by residents on all four sides. Two sides have, uh, one side has a single-lane road, and the other one's butted up right next to residents. Housing a hundred and fifty-four people with all their pets outdoors in such a small space, so close to residents, is definitely a noise impact to the residents, as well as all the services coming and going, 'cause you can't even, uh, support, uh, onsite, uh, kitchen and onsite laundry services. Um, there's only nine parking spaces. Our, our parking, residents are already hiking three to four blocks to get home at night because all of the Main Street, all of Sunset are crowded by, uh, RVs.
Thank you. Okay, so, did I get Mark Knight, Paul Abascal, Travis, uh, Benin, Gabe Hill, Adella Agliar, Kimberly Ovitt? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Paul Abascal. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Venice and a homeowner. The Venice residents wanna see those in need get the housing they need. However, the list of problems associated with the Venice MTA bridge housing location is long. Councilman Bonin, the five million dollars being spent on temporary bridge housing, on this temporary bridge housing experiment that is going to be torn down in three years is a colossal waste of money. The five million dollars should be spent on building permanent housing solutions. This site is not a permanent step forward for those in need. The MTA three-year project is an example of the lack of forethought, planning, and wasteful use of tax dollars that has helped create the current homeless crisis. There are far better, more cost-effective, and appropriate locations the city is not considering. I urge you not to pass this MTA lot location and to vet the other locations that are far more effective. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Ryavek. I'm president of the Venice Stakeholders Association. We work on quality of life, public safety, um, issues and parking and, uh, over, and stopping overdevelopment in Venice. Um, I put into the record to the clerk, um, earlier, seven letters from residents near the MTA lot, speaking to the absolute lack of any parking, um, near that facility. I would now like to show you, from Mr. Bonin's website, a picture of this huge complex that's going in on that site, and I would like to ask Mr. Bonin if he would please answer this question. In different places in the Bureau of Engineering report, it says that there are a hundred and eleven parking spaces that are gonna be provided. I don't see them here. Another place, um, it says there's going to be only nine. Could you answer that question, sir? How many parking spaces will be permanently provided in this new complex?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Herman, you wanna hold your sign, you do it, but you're not gonna be fidgeting around while other people are speaking. It's your last warning. Yes, sir, please come forward and identify yourself.
Travis Benin, Venice resident, and I'm here because-
What was that name again?
Travis Benin. And I'm here because, uh, I'm not opposed to bridge housing, I'm opposed to the location. You're seeking a CEQA exemption. The location is terrible. It's surrounded by residents. It's gonna endanger residents' lives. It's right by the beach, which is where a lot of the transients are drinking and doing drugs. The shelter has no limits to, or you can go into the shelter intoxicated or drunk. Uh, Bonin knows this is a terrible location, which is why he used taxpayer money to pay the invisible people, to essentially film homeless people and promote it all over social media. We had to find out through a public records request. He has not filled the public records request. We have lots of missing information. It's a breach of ethics. It's possibly a violation of law, but we won't know until we get the information from him. I ask everybody in here to abstain from a vote until we know what Mr. Bonin has done, if it's broken the law or not, and I also ask them to abstain from a vote because the Venice Neighborhood Council has not blessed this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, speaker.
I'm Adilia Aguilar, a Venice resident. I believe in bridge housing, but I oppose the location of the MTA lot. Other options have been proposed that have been thought through and make more sense. Please consider these other options in City 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Kimberly, and I'm a Venice resident. Um, I think, please consider the other locations. I, I'm in favor of bridge housing, but not at the MTA lot location. I am a single woman that lives in Venice, and it is very unsafe. I have already been sexually harassed several times when I'm just trying to walk my dog down the street where I live in my home, and having, moving a hundred and fifty people next door to us is extremely, feels extremely unsafe for me. So, I really would appreciate you to see our side of things and just consider another location, um, because these people are on drugs and it causes them to, to act that way, um, and to make people like myself feel extremely unsafe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. And Rozzy, I cannot pronounce the last name, Ru Fugarin? Excuse me. But sir, please, you're right there. Yeah.
Hey, guys, um, if we could actually get you to pay attention, 'cause I don't know how many of you are in the parking lot singing Frank Sinatra with each other.
Let's speak to the issue.
No, I, no, I will. I'm gonna get to this point, though, because it seems like with the voting that's going on today, that the decisions are already made. People aren't really paying attention to what the problems are. Venice is a very unique situation. That location of the MTA lot, the reasoning behind it is, we should have the bridge housing where the homeless are. But in Venice, there's a reason why we have a certain homeless population there. There's a lot of other areas in LA that have the same homeless we do, which are people that have lost their homes, people that don't have a place to live, but in Venice, we have people that come to Venice to specifically be homeless. There are people from other parts of the country that hear, hey, Venice is a cool place to go hang out, so they come there to hang out, to beg for money, because you can do so on the boardwalk with all the tourists, and because it's easy to be there and be homeless. That's why we have a different population there and why this is not a great location for this. There are others-
Next speaker. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Rosira Fugarin, um, and I'm a Venice resident. I live across the MTA lot, and I would appreciate your attention to the neighborhood's, uh, request of reconsidering the MTA location. We're all in for homing, uh, helping the homeless. Bridge housing makes sense. The location of MTA is a bad location. I live across from the MTA lot. Um, we live in a neighborhood that is- We live in a neighborhood that is walkable. We have small houses, small businesses, and small schools. We walk our kids to school. It's not a heavy, the traffic is horrible, the parking is very bad. MTA lot is large. You're making an organization in that neighborhood, because the size of it, it's so big for that neighborhood. There's a small street, small homes. This is going to be a big organization that is going to affect our daily life. Again, I love she does, all the arguments that we hear from the other side. We just do not believe MTA lot is the best place for us.
Thank you.
Thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Now, any other folk from the no side that did not speak? From the no side? Ms. McAllister? Yes, ma'am, come on. Anyone else from over the no side? Yes, identify yourself.
My name is Alisa Delaroca. I'm a forty-eight-year resident from Venice. I live only one-half a block away from the MTA lot. I'm here to register my opposition to the repurposing of the MTA lot at 100 Sunset as bridge housing for the homeless. Some reasons for my opposition follow in much abbreviated form. One, the Venice Neighborhood Council has not approved this plan. In fact, the VNC on November 20th presented alternative locations for Councilman Bonin's consideration, but we see no evidence of Mr. Bonin's interest in alternative locations. The MTA lot is in the heart of Venice with residents on all four sides and is the only proposed site for bridge housing surrounded by residents. The MTA lot is in close proximity, less than two blocks to three schools educating 553 elementary and pre-K students.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. McAllister?
Thank you. I am opposed to this bridge housing, and I want people to know, bridge means homeless shelter. See, you just changed the name. I want everybody out there to know that bridge housing, that is a homeless shelter. Now, why do we have all these people here who want a homeless shelter? Because they're making money. When you have a homeless shelter, they're making money. They're taking people's Social Security money. They're making them put in money into the shelter and don't get it back. They're stealing the workers. They're stealing the clothing and all that stuff that they get from charity. That's why. They're not here to ask where that 1.2 billion dollars is to build affordable housing. And when Ms. Ramirez said the word Jew, the whole room blew up, so that tells you who's in here, okay? I know what's going on. We need housing. You guys got the money, and I think you've invested that money. I really do, because you're not coming up with it. You have all these people here talking about building some darn shelters. The shelters house them for a couple of months and throw them on the street. We don't need them back on the street. We need some housing.
Thank you. General?
My name is General Dogut. I'm not for or against, but I'm just here to say that the mayor's bridge home program is nothing but a bridge to criminalization. And El Peabody Shelter is a case in point. You got, if you're not one of the forty people that's lucky enough to hit the lottery to get in, then you're one of the unfortunate 300 people that subjected to criminalization, right? Right now, they're over there sanitation, taking their property, and LAPD is harassing them until they're forced out of the area. So, and then another thing, I'm just, I'm just here to really give my demands. And my demands is if the city say they intend is not to criminalize homelessness, then take LAPD out. They're not social workers and they don't have housing. What the hell are they doing in there anyway, right? And then another thing is, here we is, Triple H was passed two years ago, right? You have projects that's been already released, money has been released. We supposed to have an audit, right? Here it is, almost a year after the first project, there is no audit. The audit has not been released. The Controller's Office haven't done it yet. Then third, the CHSA that's supposed to have a working group.
General, that?
We still waiting on the working group, babe.
General, your time is done.
We ain't sitting there yet. We got...
Your time is done. Thanks. Okay, sir. Sir, do...
I have. You done with the HHH money?
No, 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 let's just, yes, sir.
My name is Jack Kenberg, and I'm a businessman, and I cannot fathom why you would put $5 million into a project that's going to be terminated in three years. Put it into something more permanent. And also, why would you put a project up with no parking when you're trying to put people in there to get jobs and go to a job? How are they supposed to get to their job? And where are they supposed to park their car? They'll park them in the neighborhood, which is already highly impacted. And one last thing, Mr. Bonin, you have not legally properly notified and done this whole thing correctly, and it ought to be fixed before any vote is taken.
Okay, thank you. So, that concludes the comment. I'm going to recognize Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to everybody who came out today from both sides. There are people here today holding signs and saying Venice says yes, and there are people here today holding signs and saying Venice says no. And the fact of the matter is...
No, let's don't interrupt. No, we're not having that, so...
The fact of the matter is, this is not a question of whether we say yes or no. This is a question of what we say yes to, whether we say yes to housing and shelter and beds, or whether we say yes to a continued proliferation of sidewalk encampments in our neighborhoods and the host of problems that that causes. This question actually goes back over a decade to when the city of Los Angeles was sued. And the Ninth Circuit said to us, and has now said to nine states around the country, you cannot say no to everything. You cannot say no to housing and shelter and sidewalks. You cannot say no to everything. You must say yes to something. And when faced with that question in 2006 or so, the council and the city of Los Angeles essentially said, okay, faced with that question, we will say yes to sidewalks. And as a result, we are all living with a crisis that is incredibly visible, incredibly intense, and has been getting worse, because sidewalk encampments are effectively allowed everywhere until, unless and until we start saying yes to housing and to shelters. So we have the question before us. Do we give people a place to stay while we are finding them the permanent housing that we are building in Venice and around the city? Or do we allow them to continue to live in squaller, some dying on our sidewalks, in our parks, under our bridges, in front of people's schools, in front of people's homes, and in front of people's businesses? The status quo works for absolutely nobody. But if we keep saying no to housing and to shelter, we allow the status quo to continue, and we allow the status quo to get significantly worse, and nobody, nobody benefits from that. Los Angeles needs actual solutions. Now, when fires ravage parts of the state and people are left homeless, we rush to find a way to house them. But in this country, we have a system and an economy that basically forces people into homelessness, then punishes them for being homeless, and then objects to ways to get them unhomeless. And that doesn't work. The state legislature recently said, cities of Los Angeles, we're going to make it easier for you to do emergency shelter and bridge housing to get people off the street. Now, these questions of where to place, whether it's permanent housing or temporary shelters, they're never black-and-white solutions. They're not easy. There's no perfect solution that everybody is happy with. But the location that we have chosen in Venice is a reasonable one and a sensible one.
No, 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 no. No, 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 now wait a minute. When you got, hold tight. When you came up, I made sure everybody got a chance to speak, did not let you get interrupted. I'm not going to have that happen to Mr. Bonin with you, either if you're with him or not. If you disrupt again, you will all be removed, all right? If you disrupt again, you will all be removed, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. When the mayor designed this program, the idea behind it was to find locations near existing encampments to provide an alternative to those encampments. The largest concentration of homelessness on the West Side by far is in Venice, so Venice is the place where we needed to put this program. Near, almost adjacent to two of the largest encampments in Venice was a vacant, absolutely vacant, three-acre former bus yard. It is available only on a temporary basis because Metro is eventually putting permanent housing there. So we knew that it could be permanent. We knew that it was vacant, and we knew that it was available. And MTA had recently remediated it in preparation for the long-term housing that will go there. We've looked at other locations. In fact, in the 11th District, we're under construction right now with bridge housing in Brentwood. We are looking at other locations for additional permanent housing and bridge housing in the 11th District. We're not going to look at an aircraft carrier docked off the Venice Pier, as has been suggested, but we are looking at various other locations around the district. We need to break the cycle of forcing people into homelessness and then preventing them from not, from getting housed. And we have been doing that around the city. I want to thank the mayor for his leadership in crafting this program. I want to thank the people in Venice who are in favor of solutions, the folks in the audience here, including Will Hawkins. I want to thank the folks from She Does and from Everyone In, because everyone needs to be in around the city. And I got to say, you know, there, some of my colleagues have approached me during the discourse today, and they said, subtract the word Venice and replace it with the word Creataown, or the word Sherman Oaks, or the word Wilmington, or the word Woodland Hills. And we hear the same objections everywhere, but we hear more people saying, solve this damn problem. We hear more people saying we do not want encampments in our neighborhoods and we don't want people living and dying in them. And so I want to thank Mr. Wesson for his courage and leadership in stepping out first on this. I want to thank Mr. Rue for his steadfastness in Sherman Oaks, Mr. Buscayino for his leadership in San Pedro and in Wilmington, and everybody else who stepped forward, Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Weezer, who have guided us through this process. The entire city is going to be part of these solutions. And the time to break that cycle is today. The time to say no to encampments is today. The time to say yes to beds and housing and shelter is today. So, colleagues, I'd ask for an eye vote with one small technical correction. I do want to clarify that the project will include at least 20 onsite parking spaces for employees and visitors to the site. And I'm asking to amend the H&amp;P report to direct the Bureau of Engineering and consultation with other departments as necessary to update the project's site plan accordingly to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. So let's vote on this item as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Okay. All right, all right, all right, okay. All right, that's it. Look, we still have work to do. That is it. I want to recognize, Mr. Rue, are you around? You wanted to make a quick announcement. We have other work to do.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Our Health Education Committee will be at 2:00.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, the ITGS Committee will convene at 1:45.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Kocorian, before I, oh, Mr. Price?
Yes, the Economic Development Committee will be meeting at 1:30.
Okay. Before I recognize Mr. Kocorian, I want things to clear out a bit, because you have a very Okay, well, in fact, you know what, sergeants? Why don't we, since we are, people are leaving, why don't we clear the chambers and we'll address the closed session issue?
I don't think we need to, sir.
Oh, well, we'll just recognize you and let you speak on it.
Yeah, items 63, 64, 65, and 66 have all been considered by Budget and Finance.
If I may tap in, so we voted on item 63 already. Item 66, I have good news. I can say that this was a recommended reject, but we can now receive and file it because the city won the trial, so we don't owe anything.
So, Mr. President, I would, Budget and Finance has considered these matters, recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations on 64 and 65, and as to number 66, we can go ahead and receive and file that.
Okay, so...
And, Mr. President, on item 64 in the case entitled Julie Wagner versus the City of LA, there's a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. And on item 65 in the case entitled Andy Hayes versus the City of LA, there's a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement.
All right, so on that, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, so before we begin with the rest of the business that's on our agenda for today, I would like to recognize Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Team Kocorian to come on behind me and join me for what's a really profoundly bittersweet moment for me as one of the most senior chiefs of staff in City Hall, a young man who has indelibly shaped this city throughout the last 15 years. And throughout his time of service for me, my chief of staff, Irene Brinosian, is leaving city service. And I just wanted to take a few moments to recognize him for all that he's done for all of us. And I think all of you know that any policy issue of any substance that any of us have had to pursue through this council has, in one way or the other, been touched by Irene and his influence. When we came back from the Great Recession and tried to balance this budget in a way that could restore services and save the city from insolvency, it was Irene's hand on the tiller that helped us all to get through that and helped avoid thousands of layoffs that we were facing at the time. When it comes to job creation, all the work that we've done in my office in order to attract more businesses here has had his stamp on it, and he personally engaged in negotiations with Yahoo, Mr. Bonin, to bring Yahoo into this city. That was the result of Irene personally negotiating with the leaders of Yahoo. Whether it was the minimum wage law that we passed, whether it was any number of issues that were controversial within this council that were difficult for us to get through, more often than not, Irene Brinosian was in the center of bringing us to a solution that worked for the best interest of the city and for this council. But I wanted to tell you a little bit more about him, about some things that you might not know about him, because I have known and stood by the side of Irene for literally more than half of his life. He came to the political arena when he was a seventeen-year-old senior in high school, not even old enough to vote himself, and he joined my campaign and started registering voters in three different languages, empowering people, immigrant families like his own, to be a part of our American political system. And he was one of the key volunteers we had in 1999, and he's continued to make an impact ever since. I lost that campaign, but the community really gained through that campaign because of his efforts in empowering people throughout the 43rd Assembly District. Shortly after that, he joined what was then the most expensive congressional campaign in the history of the United States, and he helped have an influence on the future of our country by taking over as the field director for then-state Senator Adam Schiff and helping him to defeat Jim Rogan and elect him to the Congress, and we all know what's happened in the decades since then. Shortly after that, Irene joined Councilmember Viragosa's team and helped to run his campaign for mayor. Once he was elected, Irene took over as part of the mayor's budget shop and started developing his budget chops with the mayor. So, both in a political sense, in a policy sense, in a budgetary sense, he has been one-of-a-kind, an irreplaceable asset for this city. And I feel kind of like you feel when your oldest goes off to college or something, you know? I mean, you hope that you've raised them right, and you're going to miss them, but you know that you can't keep them at home any longer. Eventually, they're just, they've gotten too big for what they're doing, and they have to go on and influence the world in bigger ways. And so I'm so pleased to be joined by the incredible team that Irene has helped put together and lead, and to thank him for all of his service and to congratulate him on the next step that he'll be taking. the next step that he'll be taking, which you'll all be hearing about separately outside of the context of this building. I'm sure you'll all be invited to grand openings and things like that. But in the meantime, I just want to take a moment to thank and bid farewell to my dear friend, my chief of staff, my most important advisor, the guy who has helped me to do everything that I've done here in this building, Irene Brinosian.
Let's give Irene a round.
And we have a little parting gift, Mr. President.
Oh, that's a good one. Well, Mr. Kocorian, I think you've started a new trend with that. But Irene, just let me say, like when I spoke of when Big Jim, when it was announced Big Jim was leaving as well, you're one of the special ones. I mean, you really have been part of the glue that keeps the council together and moves us in the right direction. And you two are a good guy and a great guy, and you will be missed. I remember when I had the first conversation with Paul about your leaving. I was devastated, as I'm sure he was as well. But thank you and your family for your service, and those, Mr. Kocorian, are huge shoes to fill. Let's give Irene one more round.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. I'll keep this quick, so you can continue with the council meeting. But all I can say is thank you to my amazing team. Thank you to my wife, my beautiful wife, who I met here. She's been a rock for me these past eight years. And thank you, most importantly, the Councilman Kocorian, for this amazing opportunity. He trusted in me to do everything I could to do right by him, and I've done my best. And I'll never forget the time that I've had here. So thank you. I'll see you all soon. This is not a goodbye, it's a so long. Thank you.
You've done that and more. Okay, I want to try to take care of some business, and then we have another member that's asked to make an announcement. But Mr. Murphy, is Sean still here? Sean Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, let's eliminate him. Okay, Ms. McAllister, I think you have one minute, plus your general, so come on. Let her through.
And, Mr. President, as the speaker makes her way forward, for the record, there are motions that have been posted and circulated for items 10, 27, 47, 52, 76, and the reconsidered item number nine.
Why don't we deal with, can we deal with those issues, and then I'll let Ms. McAllister? Okay, no, Ms. McAllister, you go ahead first. No, you go ahead. You got one moment and one minute, and then another one for general.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number 50 here, you want to, this property at 1920 West Third Street, you want to make that a shelter. Remember now, I'm not going to use the word "bridge," because "bridge" means shelter. But you want to charge, you want to charge $250,000. Okay, that's what you want to pay them, rather, to rent this property? Well, that's like, that's a lot of money, don't you think? That's like $258,000, not $258,000, but that's a lot of money for one property. You see what I mean? So that's about $250,000 a year, a year. So I don't know, because the whole total is $752,000. I don't understand what you guys are doing with these shelters, but I see a big con game going on, okay? And a lot of teachers are losing their retirements because of scandals, and they're on the street too. You've got teachers in these shelters, you've got nurses in these shelters, but our teachers are losing their retirement because of scam, and I gave you guys that handout. And I think this...
Okay, now, give her, give her her minute for general public.
This, I'm working on it on the outside, but this council needs to be held accountable for what LAUSD is doing, okay? They are, they are in a, now, I've broken the scam down. The scam is this: They will take the teacher's retirement money and put it into California State Retirement System, CALSTERS, at 8%. It could be more now. So that could be like $400. This is a month. Then they take that $400 and those salaries, and they transfer it over to PARS. PARS is a non-teacher retirement system, and then they steal the $400 that was currently taken out, then they take it to PARS and take out 3.75 more, and that's what the teacher gets back. So when the teacher retires, they say, oh, you have enough service credit, you want to buy some? Or you just don't have enough, okay? And so many of them are becoming homeless. I'm working on it out there. But we got LAUSD involved, we got PARS involved, and the California State Retirement System called CALSTERS. They're all involved in embezzling billions of dollars of teacher retirement funds. I want this council to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Previn, I think you have two minutes, plus one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, sir. The speed limit increase is a big problem in Studio City. We're going to bring it up from 35 to 40 on two very important areas where our neighbors walk and live. Now, I know you want to do more enforcement against people, but this is very fishy. Now, Mike Bonin just rubber-stamped it, and he wouldn't let us hear the report. Mike Bonin is not Mr. Clean Money, as you know. Mike Bonin is a liar, okay? And Mike Bonin told the people that he was going to defend their right on campaign finance, and you, sir, totally sold the Felix Down the River to give Mitchell Englander a benefit.
Is this, no, this... I don't understand which item.
Community benefit, sir. Oh, okay, I'll talk about the parking ones. You've got, Mitchell Farrell is the most pernicious little guy I've ever seen. He goes around putting up restrictions all over his neighborhood. He's like mad about it, and he then advertises to other council members, like up in Weezer, when he was doing in Mitch Englander's Public Safety Committee, where he was saying, get with Mr. Weezer's group and see if he can work it out to get a vacation in the city proper.
Okay, Mr. Previn, let's hold his time.
No, no, these are parking, these are all on the agenda, sir. These are right on, let me tell you the item number. I'll tell you the item number. Don't interrupt me, sir. I'll tell you the item number.
Mr. Previn, you don't run this meeting.
No, I don't, but I've been waiting all day.
I froze your time so that I could make sure that you and I are on the same page.
We're not.
Now, if you, then, then, I'm going to indicate to you what measures that you can speak on.
Did you do that earlier?
And please stay on those issues.
So what exercise is this? Is it me trying but failing as you say so?
No, Mr., you know, give Mr. Previn his general public comment minute. Go ahead, Mr. Previn. Now say whatever you want.
That would be yet another violation. And, sir, let's be very clear. I've always been fair to you. You are the most bad faith leader in this town, and you're running for county supervisor, and it ain't going to work, buddy. Because I'm going to tell everybody in America and the city about what you do, and what you do is so dishonest and unfair. You're going to give Mitch Englander a special election, but last time when Monica Rodriguez was getting elected, you said, we can't have a special election, it's too much money. $2.5 million is going to go into him and his cronies, and you today refuse to get rid of the threshold that blocks real candidates from getting into these races, so it's just the way you like it, sir. Where the top 20%, you don't even need the money, do you? Because you never get matching money, because you're clean, like Clean Money Mike Bonin and David Rue, who is a, I hate to say it, but a little prick, because he has systematically acted like a rock star when people in Studio City have said, come and talk to us about this campaign finance ordinance that you all want to support that is as corrupt as corrupt gets. You heard from all your half-friends this morning. So why? Why would you run your city like this?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Now, Mr. Previn, no, your time has expired. I didn't, no, you just had your general public comment. Ms. Sergeants, show Mr. Previn a chair. No, we're going to show you a chair. Mr. Previn is now disrupting the meeting. Mr. Previn, please take a seat.
Mr. Previn was given ample opportunity to get back on topic, and he refused to do so.
No, he's having a bad day. Okay, let us, Mr. Herman has two minutes to, okay, Mr. Herman, items 1, 2 through 10, 33 through...
Oh, FedEx, cool.
41.
Whatever.
Go ahead.
Well, whatever it may be, we're starting the problem once again with more alcohol sales, a convenience of necessity. We had the discussion earlier why people don't want homeless people living in their community, because this city subjects you to alcoholism, drugs, and cannabis. So who created the problem? Your local government. So don't excuse yourself from the problems you create. Otherwise, Jewish doctors make a killing off abortions.
Stay on item...
In essence, as well, since I'm not politically correct...
Now, what item are you on, Mr. Herman?
I'm on the agenda, Herb.
No, what item?
I'm on item 10. Wesson and Dickhead Dawson funding for resurfacing. But what the hell does Dawson know about resurfacing? The cholo chango there...
So item 10 is not on resurfacing. It's a, it's a PCN for alcohol, Mr. ...
Mr. Herman, Mr., give Mr. Herman, Erica, please, give Mr. Herman his one minute for general public comment. He will not stay on topic. He has one minute.
Would you want the fucking Baptists, and the fucking Klan with the barber college degrees doing abortions like Herman Jason Wesson? Would you want Herb Wesson for a second bullshit of Jewish holidays? Would you want fucking Herman Jason's son to run for the 10th District when the motherfuckers starting problems with his mailing fraud? Would you want me and Monica and Nury to have an abortion, or maybe abort me with the Jewish doctor of the cleaning office?
Mr. City Attorney, this has nothing at all to do... No, Mr. Herman, thank you, your time is expired. You're not, Sergeants, please, and turn the mic. Would you kill the mic? Would you please kill the mic? Take Mr. Herman outside. Mr. Herman, you're being removed. Just remove Mr. Herman.
He's disrupting the meeting.
Remove him, he is disrupting this meeting.
He repeatedly failed to get on the topic or to speak to something within the jurisdiction of this committee, and he's now disrupting the meeting by making lots of noise and not following the instruction to leave quietly. And he's still shouting...
Mr. Herman, you're disrupting, you're disrupting our meeting, and please hastily leave. Again, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, he is still, he is still disrupting the meeting. He is still disrupting the meeting. And I wonder, should somebody see if he has the mental capacity to take care of a dog? I would not want that dog to be injured because of a person that obviously has issues. Okay, that brings us where? Mr. Greenspan?
He's going to get forgotten.
Items 1 through 10, sir. Items 1 through 10, and general public comment.
A belated happy Hanukkah, you scab rabbis. Mike Greenspan, creator of the perfect slogan, unionize the synagogues, they can afford it. I love streetlights. I grew up in the deep south, and you always knew, growing up in the county, when you were in the city, the streetlights. That was a dividing line, better than a sign telling you where the city limits are. And I've heard John Walsh talk about the streetlights. I'm the guy in my neighborhood who used to always call for the broken streetlights. But I haven't done it in years. You guys have these new streetlights that are great. I can't remember. It's probably coming upon 10 years since I've called a broken streetlight. You see, the streetlights being on wooden poles are easier to replace than the streetlights that are on those metal poles. That's impossible, or practically impossible. So you guys do a great job on the streetlights. In fact, I, you could say I did the Lord's work on a streetlight. No, no animals were sacrificed. It was more Moses-like, if anything else, but, you know, kind of like the lights. The Dodgers are playing under the lights, you might hear at the sports cast. And, or you go to Herb's church, and I see the light. Well, I saw the light, and you can, maybe you can call me Nene, the one of the Real Housewives of Atlanta that always says bam. Because, you know, if I had a hammer, well, I have a hammer, and I swung that hammer, and bam, I hit this wicked, evil, creepy Jew hand of idolatry and the occult and smashed it into pieces, bam! Well, let's go to the liquor topic, because liquor topic is always an interesting one. Because I didn't realize we just got off prohibition in the few years, within the past few years, and here we are, once again, opening up another liquor outlet. And, hey, what can I say? I've grown up in the deep south where we have dry counties. I mean, if you were in Madison County, Florida, this would be necessary. It's a dry county. A friend of mine asked for beer once in a general store, and the guy says, we don't have beer here. So that's what it's like when you go in dry counties, a lot different from La La Land. And, you know, one of these Tuesdays, I got to actually come back here, a future Tuesday, and tell you all about going to Young Life in Orange Park, Florida. Boy, what an experience. And before our unionized mouthpiece, Mr. Fable, goes to say I'm off-topic, no, this is actually about off-site consumption, but you're going to have to wait till a future Tuesday. I'll give you one hint, though. That broad Hillary's book title, It Takes a Village. That broad Hillary's book title, It Takes a Village, that's the only hint I'm giving you.
Let's give him his one minute.
Thank you. I, on day 1,179 of Ku Klux Klan government in Florida, also known as Friday, September 21st, 2018, I last spoke in front of the city council, and I was told while speaking on item 24 on the fiscal impact that I was off-topic. How can you be off-topic when you are on topic? And perhaps, maybe I should follow Herb Wesson's advice and go seek counseling from some crackpot Jewish psychiatrist. And when the crackpot Jewish psychiatrist would ask, well, how do you feel about Mr. Englander? I would say, I feel like Mary Fagan in Atlanta in 1913, after she got raped, robbed, and murdered by that New York Jew, Leo Frank.
Okay, that concludes his general public com... Let's vote on the reconsidered item from Friday, then. You want to identify...
And an amending motion has been posted and circulated.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item 1, let's see, who do we have? We have some cards. Is Gab, Rob here still? Gavin? I didn't, I don't see either one of them, so let's vote on item 1. So what we're going to do with all of the ordinances, I'll just close out the public comment, and we will continue them until tomorrow, okay?
Okay, and for the record, Mr. President, that would be items 1 through 7, 34, 35, and 72.
There's still a couple of cards, I want to make sure. Item 72. Natalie, Natalie, are you here? Please come forward. Elizabeth Peterson, are you here? Please come forward on item 72. Yes?
Hi there. My name is Natalie Schuman, and I'm, I'd like to start by, I'm speaking on behalf of, sorry, 30,000 workers represented by Unite Here Local 11. I'd like to start by saying that I was not properly notified or noticed for this project. I didn't receive anything in the mail regarding the final approval before you today, despite being on Interested Parties list and speaking at multiple hearings. That being said, we urge the council to not rescind its earlier action, referring this project to the CPC to review and deliberate on the zone change that was requested by Plum. When the project was first heard by CPC and council, the applicant had incorrectly requested a zone change to the RAS 42 zone, which would not have allowed for the project's requested density of 110 guest rooms. So once this error was realized, Plum increased the zone change to the correct zone, and given that this is a significantly larger discretionary approval, council sent the project back to the CPC. We don't understand why the project is not slated to go before the CPC, as was previously planned, and we urge the council to stick with its original plan and have the project and increased zone change be heard by the appropriate body.
Next speaker.
Thank you, council members. Elizabeth Peterson, applicant's representative. We respectfully request that you amend the technical correction to the correction is from an R3P2 to a C2-2 instead of the original RAS 42. The development of seven-story hotel with 110 neighborhood-serving guest rooms, the project will be approximately 80 feet high, will be parked to code, and will... the project will be approximately eighty feet high, will be parked to code, and will abide by the setback requirements. Presently, the site is a parking lot. This project was vetted all through Plum ZA hearings as a hotel with one-hundred-and-ten rooms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what I am going to do is I'm going to close the hearing on this and we'll vote on, on this item tomorrow.
Again, those were items one through seven, thirty-four, thirty-five, and seventy-two.
Number eight, let's go to number eight. Uh, Adele Bertha Charles Porter, come forward. Please, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Adeline Bertha. I work for Social Model Recovery Systems. I'm here today to oppose the PCN request and voice my concerns about pending alcohol licenses in and around Skid Row. There is an onslaught of alcohol outlets in the border of Skid Row threatening our vulnerable community. Recovery and improved health and wellness are major themes here. This use would only contribute to alcohol-related concerns and problems. We need a diversity of uses, not more places to drink. In light of the recent rise of DUIs, this would be an additional threat to the lives of many who sleep on the sidewalks. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Charles Porter, also with Social Model, work in the Skid Row area. We're pleased that the full-line request has been withdrawn for this particular item. But beer and wine is still problematic. Alcohol on sale, locations are not benign uses. Alcohol consumption has numerous negative health and community impacts. And case-by-case approvals have cumulative effects. And we need community-specific protections. Efforts are underway now to put protections in our community plan to restrict alcohol uses in Skid Row. If we do not plan for health and wellness, then residents will suffer the consequence, the consequences. This is also concerning in light of recent city efforts to expedite on-sale alcohol requests. We do not support this request and ask that you take these matters into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to vote, thank you, on items eight through ten. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Item thirty-three. Let's vote on item thirty-three. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Now we can vote on items thirty-six through forty-six. Let's open, thirty-six through forty-six, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes. Council may also vote on item twenty-seven as amended.
Let's do that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Is forty-seven ready to go? Okay, now we'll vote on item forty-seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Forty-eight through sixty-two. Let's open the roll.
And, Mr. President, item fifty-two has an amending motion. So if we could vote on fifty-two separately-
Let's vote on fifty-two as amended. Let, let's-
Let's vote first on forty-eight through sixty-two, minus fifty-two.
Is that easier? Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Now let's vote on fifty-two as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item sixty-eight through seventy-five. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Bonin, you want to send something forthwith?
Forty-five forthwith and forty-eight urgent forthwith, if we could-
Okay, so on, we'll send forty-five. We vote on forty-eight urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Seventy-six, is seventy-six good?
Eleven ayes. Yes, on seventy-six, there's a substitute motion, so two votes are required. The first vote will be whether to substitute.
Okay, before I do that, Ms. Rodriguez, you were on the, oh, okay. All right, so the, Mr. Englander.
I'm sorry, yes, sixty-two C forthwith, please.
Okay, without objection. Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
Sorry, I missed seventy-one. Seventy-one forthwith, please.
Seventy-one forthwith. Seventy-six. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And this first vote is whether to substitute. Eleven ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That leaves us with?
Item thirty-two, a motion is required.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Harris Dawson seconds. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us where? In fact, let me see if I can get Mr. Bonin. Mr. Bonin, could you help me for a few minutes run through these general public comment?
Sure.
Mitch, you can do it and we'll have Mr. Bonin make his announcement.
Okay, we'll do general public comment. Jim John Lecker, John Pelzer, Jessica Cilius, Claudia Olivera, Brigid Kelly, Tenny Keishen, Frank Romero, Patricia Lyon, Lan Wen, Rebecca Schiffman, L., Brenda Wilson, Nancy Evans, Ellie Haber, Andrew Gutierrez, Ron Harris, Regina James, Andres Okon, Ann Zimmerman, Rodney Brown. Okay, seeing no further people on the queue, that closes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's left before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting and referred, without objection.
And the desk is clear.
Okay, any announcements, colleagues? I, I will start with one. Tricia, could you come up here? So colleagues, if, like Mr. Wesson, you've been one of those people who's thought I've spoken way too much today, I want you to get over here. I want you to see the person who's to blame for that, because she's leaving me. This is Tricia Keen, my deputy chief of staff. She has been the point person both on the Venice Bridge housing and on short-term rentals. So because of our heavy, she's the one responsible for all my talking today with a heavy agenda. Tricia has worked not only on the bridge housing and on the short-term rentals, but on pretty much everything of major import that I've done. And she's gotten frustrated with me and, and the pace of it and, and the complexity of the work. So she decided to go work on something a lot easier. She's going to go over to the planning department and be their deputy director of something that I don't quite understand. So she won't be far and she will be continuing to bring matters to us that are complicated and not at all easy. Tricia has worked for me from the very, very beginning. When I got elected, I knew that probably the most important job in my office was going to be my planning director. And we searched far and wide for the best planning director we could find. And we found her. We stole her from county council's office. Zev was not pleased with me at all that we took you away. Prior to that, she lived on the dark side, working for Latham. But she decided to, to start doing good with her life and went to the county and then came here to do even more good. After a couple of years, she became my deputy chief of staff. And she has been a leader and a nurturer on the team. She's done a lot of the administrative stuff and she's helped us bring even more good people onto the team. She is, she is very smart. She's classy, she's professional, she's thoughtful, and she's very kind. But really, more than anything else, she's pretty weird. She is one of the oddest people I've ever met. I refer to her as my weird little onion, because every day you can peel another layer of eccentricity and discover something wonderful and interesting about Tricia. So she's not going far. She's going over to Mr. Bertoni, whom I will punish significantly during the budget process. Anything you want to say?
I really don't know how to say anything to follow that up. And for the first time in my time with Council District Eleven, I will be brief and just say thank you.
First time she's been brief and not played devil's advocate. So, any other announcements, colleagues? Okay, do we have any adjourning motions? No adjourning motions, so say nothing before this body. We are adjourned until Mitchell Englander's last day tomorrow.
What I enjoy most is being able to fabricate and create and produce items literally from just a concept or an idea that's placed on a piece of paper or, or even an image that you see on a, on a screen. American Furniture Manufacturers supplies furniture for a lot of big-name hotels in the Los Angeles market and all throughout California. We focus mainly on commercial clients. And to make it commercial, you, it needs to be very, very durable, very high quality. My father, Harry, started this company in two thousand and four.